Be cheerful, strive to be happy. Thank you. All who are able, please stand and join in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The audience can't see behind us, but out through the windows, a dog was just chasing some geese over in the park. So that was actually kind of funny. Before we adopt tonight's agenda, Town Council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Does any council member have anything they'd like to share at this time? Okay. Seeing none, is there a motion and a second to adopt this evening's agenda?
Mayor and Council, I move that we adopt this evening's agenda.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Seeing none, the motion carries unanimously, six-zero. There are three items on this evening's consent agenda: a resolution authorizing sidewalk projects' construction contract, a resolution amending the sidewalk program development policy, and a debt policy update. Do any council members wish to remove anything from the consent agenda for discussion before we vote? Okay. Seeing none, is there a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda?
Make a motion to adopt consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That also carries unanimously, six-zero. We have five presentations tonight: a proclamation recognizing Building Safety Month, a proclamation recognizing Public Works Week, a proclamation recognizing National Kids to Parks Day, a proclamation recognizing National Bike to Work Day, and recognition of years of service of Peter Pritchard, Planning and Zoning Board Chair. So I will read the first proclamation in recognition of Building Safety Month. Whereas the town of Morrisville is committed to recognizing our growth and strength depends on the safety and economic value of the homes, buildings, and infrastructure that serve our community, both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster; and whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, permit technicians, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, labors, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings; and whereas in 2020, the town of Morrisville Inspections Department issued 1,035 building permits, conducted 8,688 inspections, and completed 2,619 plan reviews; and whereas these guardians work together with local and state officials to implement the North Carolina State Building Codes to protect us in buildings where we live, learn, work, play; and whereas Building Safety Month is an opportunity to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials and permit technicians who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings that are essential to our town's prosperity; and whereas Prevent, Prepare, Protect Building Code Save, the theme for Building Safety Month 2021 encourages all Americans to raise awareness about the importance of safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, energy conservation, water safety, training the next generation, and new technologies in the construction industry; and whereas the town of Morrisville is committed to improving building safety and economic investment at home and in the community, and acknowledges the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention divisions, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property, now therefore, the Town of Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby recognize the month of May 2021 as Building Safety Month in the Town of Morrisville, North Carolina, adopted this 11th day of May 2021. And I see we have a number of our staff here in the back of the room. I'd like to acknowledge them now for all their hard work. Go ahead and introduce yourself and your team.
Shandy Paget. I'm the inspections Director of the Town of Morrisville. I've got Mike Lee, he's our inspections Operations Manager, Diane Boyd, permit tech, JP Morgan, Senior Building Inspector, several of our staff could make it tonight. But if I can just say, these folks and the rest of the team are really the ones who make the magic happen for you. They work tires repeatedly, day in and day out, they're extremely busy, and I am so proud to be part of the team of you guys, and thank you for everything you do.
We are so very happy to acknowledge you guys in person. Thank you very much. Mayor Protam Johnson will now read the second proclamation.
Okay, and this proclamation is recognizing May 16th through the 23rd of 2021 as Public Works Week with the theme Stronger Together. Whereas the amenities, response, and attention to details our public works staff provides in Morrisville are an integral part of citizens' everyday lives and are of vital importance to a sustainable and resilient community; and whereas the support and appreciation of public works staff by citizens who receive and fund them is vital to the efficient delivery of these essential services for a wide range of public works operations responsible for rebuilding, improving, maintaining, and protecting our town's public buildings, parks, streets, stormwater, infrastructure, erosion control, traffic control, vehicles and equipment, athletic facilities, public grounds, solid waste, and recycling collection program, and town beautification efforts; and whereas the health, safety, and welfare of our community depends on these essential public work services; and whereas the quality and effectiveness are only due to the training, hard work, experience, skill, and care of our dedicated public works employees; and whereas the efficiency of the public works staff is materially influenced by the citizens' understanding and appreciation of all that these professionals provide. Now be it therefore resolved that Morrisville Town Council does hereby proclaim the week of May 16th through the 23rd, 2021, as Public Works Week with the theme Stronger Together, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the quality professional services provided by our Public Works Department, and to recognize the substantial contributions that our public works employees make every day to persevere and protect the health, safety, welfare, and overall quality of life we all enjoy. And it's adopted this 11th day of May 2021. And we have our Public Works Director. Would you like to come up, Giselle, and receive the proclamation and say some words?
Thank you. Giselle Rodriguez, Public Works Director. We really appreciate the proclamation. It is an honor for us to be able to serve this community. And I speak on behalf of the Public Works Staff because I do hear them speak every day and I see them coming to work motivated every morning to be able to serve this community. We are grateful for the opportunity and for your trust in our department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Rael will now read the third proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a proclamation in recognition of National Kids to Parks Day on May 15, 2021. Whereas National Kids to Parks Day was initiated by the National Park Trust as an annual day of outdoor exploration at local, state, and national parks and public lands across the country; and whereas parks provide a safe, inviting, and low-cost destination for families and children to visit and experience nature and get out of the house; and whereas outdoor play has multiple measurable benefits for children's mental health and physical development; and whereas Morrisville has several high-quality parks, playgrounds, and over nine miles of greenways for children and their families to explore, relax, and play in. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby recognize May 15, 2021, as National Kids to Parks Day, and encourages all residents and kids to get outdoors and enjoy Morrisville's parks and greenways, adopted this 11th day of May 2021. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will now read the proclamation recognizing National Bike to Work Day, as I actually did ride my bike to this meeting using our greenways tonight because of many of the reasons in the proclamation throughout the year, and more urgently because everything we can do to reduce fuel usage during the state of emergency, as declared by the governor today, will help our community be more resilient. In recognition of National Bike to Work Day on May 21, 2021, whereas National Bike to Work Day was initiated by the League of American Bicycleists in 1956; and whereas more than half of all Americans live less than five to 10 miles from work; and whereas 40% of all trips in the United States are less than two miles, which is an easy bike rides distance and a fun way to travel; and whereas bikes provide a very effective way to get cardiovascular exercise into your daily routine, especially when commuting to and from work; and whereas biking to work can reduce your carbon footprint, reduce air pollution, and reliance on fossil fuels; and whereas biking can save money by cutting out parking, gasoline, and other driving costs while minimizing traffic congestion; and whereas Morrisville has over nine miles of greenways that can be utilized by bicyclists to safely cycle away from traffic. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby recognize May 21 of 2021 as National Bike to Work Day, and encourages all residents to consider biking to work as an alternate transportation option, adopted this 11th day of May 2021. At this time, Michelle Stiegl, our Planning Director, will facilitate the recognition of Peter Pritchard, our Planning and Zoning Board Chair.
It is truly my pleasure to be given the opportunity to recognize our former Planning and Zoning Board Chair, Peter Pritchard. Peter has been a member of the Planning and Zoning Board since 1997. During his time on the board, he has seen this community through tremendous growth. He's been involved in two comprehensive transportation plan updates, two land use plan updates, assisted the town with a number of small area plans, reviewed development projects, and really had his hand in a number of different projects and initiatives that have helped shape this town over the years. I've had the pleasure of working with Peter for the last four years. I know many of you have worked with him much longer, but on a personal note, I have really enjoyed working with you, Peter. Peter has just a quiet demeanor and a way of making everyone feel comfortable and heard and making sure that all opinions are heard. Even if they are different from his, he is always respectful. And just his meeting facilitation skills, and just Peter in general, going to miss you, wish you well as you move away from Morrisville and into the next stage of your life. But do want to thank you for your service to the town and all the contributions that you have made over the years. I'm sure many of others will want to thank you as well, but it has truly been a pleasure. And we do have a small token of our appreciation to give you, so we are going to make you Something for you to bring to your new home and hang on your wall. And if you want to say a few words, you can use my microphone.
And Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor Protam, esteemed council members and members of staff, thank you for that recognition. As some of you may know, and let me move this, some of you may know, I'd actually planned to just slip away quietly, but your fabulous town manager can be very persuasive. And you can tell she's a mother, she can also lay a guilt trip when she needs to. Truly, it's been a pleasure and an honor to serve. It all started a long time ago when I decided that it was better to serve than to criticize from the sidelines. I don't believe in them and us, I believe we're all us. I think it was in 97 or 98, that's 1998, 1997 for you younger folks, that as a member of the Better Morrisville Association, I applied to be on the planning board as an alternate member. There was one vacant seat. I wasn't successful, but a much, much better candidate was, a candidate who just happened to later become a commissioner and a council member and a mayor protam. I started to attend council meetings, and one evening Commissioner C.T. Moore suggested that there should be two alternate members of the board. Those were the days when commissioner or council meetings were much more free-ranging, so that very evening I was appointed as an alternate member, the first, second alternate member of the board. I served under Billy Harnness, who owned and lived in the iconic Pew House, and who later worked with the town to have the house moved and become a town asset. A while later, in 2001, all the good candidates were unable to chair the meetings, so I was appointed. I've had the privilege of working with some great people, some dedicated fellow members of the planning board, some hard-working professional members of staff, some supportive commissioners and council members. I've worked with seven mayors, five planning directors, three town managers, and interestingly, one town attorney. Hang in there, Attorney Gray. Your current planning director, Michelle, is great. I really admire her professionalism and her judgment. She's been terrific to work with, and I'm grateful to her and all the members of the planning staff for their support and tolerance over the years. Their knowledge, excuse me, their knowledge and abilities are impressive. Even our hard-working secretary was herself once a volunteer member of a planning board in a different jurisdiction. Of course, since my wife and I arrived in Morrisville in 1994, we've seen a lot of changes. In fact, anyone who's been in Morrisville for more than a month will have seen changes. I'm pleased with some of the achievements we've made. We took a firm stand over sidewalks and green space when Breckenridge was being developed out of Pine Forest off Davis Drive. We worked with developers to assure continuity of style and character when the original builders dropped out of Kits Creek and out of Savannah. We pushed developers, in many cases, to plant more trees and install more pocket parks and other residence amenities. We faced some big concerns over some developments when they were proposed. Two large examples were Park West Village and Recrimin Corners. Again, we pushed the developers for some concessions, and I think we ended up with developments that provided greater amenities and raised, not detracted, from the value of nearby homes. Twenty years ago, there was less support for sidewalks than walking in general. For years, I took pleasure in comparing us with Kerry. We were ahead in requiring sidewalks on both sides of a street and on requiring utility lines on the frontage of commercial developments to be underground. Nowadays, the things that we pushed for are incorporated in our UDO. It's time for me to move on, and I'm sad in many ways to be doing so, but it's a good time. You have an excellent Planning and Zoning Board with depth on the bench. Your vice-chairperson has lived in the area all his life. He's lived in both Breckenridge and Savannah, and brings experience in both commercial and residential construction. You have a chief HR officer in Life Sciences who's an expert in process and who constructively challenges some of the ways that we do things. You have an attorney who's a former Assistant Attorney General, a VPS strategy who served as Chairperson of Ethics in a different municipality, a computer scientist who's a strategic thinker and who is not afraid to challenge people in a constructive way to make sure that Morrisville is a better place. You have a general and regional manager in the hospitality industry who, mid-career, is studying regional and community planning at UNC Chapel Hill. It's an awesome group. You haven't had much formal interaction with them recently, no joint meetings, for example, but I take that as a good sign. Generally, the good kids don't have much interaction with the principal, it's only the bad ones who talk to the principal a lot. But I challenge you nevertheless to make use of the awesome group you have. Ask them for advice and opinion. Listen to their thoughtful debate and analysis. Set them challenges. Since we arrived in Morrisville in 94, the small town has become a bigger town, but I hope you'll help to retain its small-town feel. A key to that will be the development of the downtown and its function as a gathering space. The latest concept is different from the vision we had in 2009, but it's wonderful to see that it has some traction, and I look forward to watching its progress. I've been fortunate to have lived and worked in four different countries, countries with different histories and geographies, but my wife and I have lived in Morrisville for longer than anywhere else in our lives. And although we lived in the San Francisco Bay Area for many years, I didn't, to quote the song, "Leave my heart in San Francisco." I will be leaving some of my heart in Morrisville, the heart of the triangle, and a great place to live, work, and play. Thank you again, and I wish you and the town the very best. May you live well and live connected.
If you would just wait there for a second, Peter. We, each of us, would like to say a few words, and then we'll give you the last word. So I'd like to begin, and then we'll work from Councilmember Garamella this way, if that's okay. It's been so beneficial to Morrisville to have you as part of our planning team for so long. Your reasoned perspective has helped shape Morrisville, and I truly appreciate all the time and effort you have put into making Morrisville a great place to live, and you will truly be missed. Councilmember Garamella?
Yeah, thanks, Peter. It's a mess for Morrisville. You're, I've watched several of your meetings and heard your strategy and analysis. You're always spot-on, and thanks for all the contribution you've done. I've never, I've not, I didn't come to US in 94, but at least you have. So the punchline I liked is working under so many, you know, people and still able to keep your cool head and work diligently for the best of the town. Thanks for your effort.
Councilmember Rael?
Well, Peter, I just can't thank you enough for just your grace and humility and making people feel very comfortable, which is one of your greatest strengths as a leader. I've learned a lot from you over the last 11 years that I've been on the council. You've been chairing, Chair of the Planning and Zoning Board, and it's a committee that has done a lot of great things for Morrisville. We depend a lot on your insight of the team that you have there, and you've had passion and, you know, we're going to really miss you a lot. But I want to thank you as a friend as well for always valuing service and understanding how hard each of us work, and wish you all the best in your transition, and hope you can come back and visit us sometime to a town where we can live connected and live well. Thank you.
Councilmember Fender?
Peter, we haven't been able to know each other very long. It's only been about a year, I guess it's almost two, though, but it's been very nice knowing you, and I appreciate your service to our town. Thank you.
Mayor Protam Johnson?
So mine's going to be a little longer, Peter. Peter and I have known each other a long time, and we were the two alternates on that Planning and Zoning Board all those 23, 24 years ago, somewhere in that, in that range. And I, I really hope this day would not come where I would have to be sitting here and thanking you and saying goodbye to you on your retirement from the Planning and Zoning Board, but, but here we are. So as someone also who has served for many years in the town of Morrisville, I know what a labor of love this has been for you. You've put your heart and your soul into these 23-plus years of service to our citizens, and I am incredibly grateful and grateful for your counsel over all these years as well. I thank you for your dedication and your commitment to the town of Morrisville and its citizens. You have been an invaluable member of this Morrisville team for years, and by Morrisville team, I mean together, all of us, the staff, the councils over the years, the public, and our Planning and Zoning Board members have addressed the challenges and the opportunities that we are blessed with here in the town of Morrisville. Your experience and your knowledge, along with your open and approachable style, has guided many, many Planning and Zoning Board members over the course of your service. Your keen ability to listen, really listen, and incorporate the concerns of your fellow colleagues has been the most, has been most valuable. You know, like I do, that no one, no one of us has the right answer or the solution, and it takes a team working together to find the best solutions for our community today and into the future. And you have, you have absolutely left your mark for years to come on this town. Your leadership and your guidance has shaped the future of Morrisville for the better and is the blue, as Michelle mentioned earlier, your hands are on the blueprints that we'll use moving into the future here in Morrisville. And I'm not going to name them all. Michelle didn't even name them all. Michelle didn't even name them all. There, there is a long list. And over the years, you've earned the confidence and the respect of many councils as if you have been reappointed during your years of service. You've also earned the respect of your fellow Planning and Zoning Board members because you were chosen as Vice Chair and Chair over and over and over again. So thank you, thank you, thank you for your hard work. Thank you for what you've done for this, for Morrisville in making it a wonderful place for our citizens to live, work, and play. I will miss you terribly, Peter, but I know your retirement is well-deserved, and I wish you and your wife all the very best in the world and, and the rest of your family as well, and I hope you get to see them in the coming days. And thank you, thank you for making Morrisville a better place.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
How can I even? Liz, you did a great job. Peter, you are an example of a servant leader by definition. You're very patient, you listen, you're very wise, and you're not, you, you don't make anyone feel like they've asked a dumb question. Even if someone like me has asked you the same question 12 times, you politely and eloquently answer the question as if it was the first time. And I know that's how you work so well on our planning board, because there are a million questions about the planning process, and there's been many new members again and again. And they probably have asked you the same question each and every one of them when they came on board, and you're very patient with that, and it helped people engage. When someone is patient and listens, they get the best work out of their team, and you got the best work out of the planning board and the best work for the town of Morrisville. And I am very grateful for that, because that is an example that I'm going to use again and again when I, when I talk about servant leadership. I'm going to talk about Peter Pritchard, because you really do walk that walk. And most importantly, during council meetings, I'm going to look out and I'm going to look for you. You're not going to be there, and I would do that, and you might not have realized, over the years, I'd always look. What does Peter think? And you, you don't smile, but I could just, I can see that acknowledgement and the patience of, okay, the story's unfolding, what's going on? And then you would carry that back to the planning board, because you would be sitting in town council meetings and in planning board, so you really knew what was going on back and forth. And that, I think, made a better experience for everyone, and we appreciate that, and we appreciate your dedication to the town of Morrisville, and I wish you the best of success on your next adventure, and I know you're going to be awesome with that, too. So thank you, Peter.
So you have our thanks from everyone, and to you, sir, the last word.
Well, of course, I'm humbled. Some of the time was not enjoyable, but it's all been very, very satisfying and a great journey and a privilege to serve. So I didn't do it because I was forced to, so your, your thanks are appreciated, but it was very selfish, because I actually got some, a lot of satisfaction from it. But I'm very humbled, and thank you all very much, and I may come and haunt you and sit in the back of your meetings in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Town Clerk Smith will now present any public comments received.
Thank you, Mayor Colley. There were no comments received for public address via email, and there were no speakers signed up to provide in-person public comments.
Should we check the lobby just to make sure there's no one there now? Thank you, sir. No. Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 11. There are two public hearing items on the agenda. A public hearing pursuant to NCGS 158-7 dot 1 on a proposed economic incentive grant agreement with Invite, Invite Corporation and consideration of text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance related to access and circulation. Martha Page, Town Manager, will present the first item prior to the opening of the public hearing. Town Manager Page?
Thank you, Mayor. On, on this first time we've been back together and many times for your first action item, it is just truly an exciting and honorable pleasure to be able to present this first item, which is approval of incentives for a project originally known as Project Oz that has now been disclosed as Invite Corporation, and approving that in accordance with our town of Morrisville Economic Incentives Development Policy. Invite, headquartered in San Francisco, is a leading medical genetics company whose mission is to bring comprehensive genetic information into mainstream medicine to improve health care. Their goal is to aggregate the world's genetic tests into a single service with higher quality, faster turnaround time, and lower prices. We all probably appreciate that more this year than we did last year. They will be locating in The Stitch, which is off of Airport Boulevard, and as we know, is our former Morrisville outlet mall. Their plan is to bring up to 374 full-time jobs with an investment of over $114 million to our community. Town Council was originally briefed on this project in November 9th and agreed to offer incentives. Invite has also been awarded a J Dig grant from the state of North Carolina at over $6 million, and Wake County is also a partner in the project, and they will be considering that item next week. Our incentives policy allows for us to pay out over eight years $1,146,000 or their investment in our community. That's approximately $143,000 a year. That is paid after they have paid their taxes, and that is verified by Wake County. They will begin hiring in January of '22 with an expectation that the investment and the jobs would be in place by December 31st, '21, 2025. We have Lee Bendeky, the Chief Policy Officer, on the phone with us from South Carolina to speak on behalf of Invite. I'd also like to recognize Dave Efferd, who is a partner with Wambel Bon Dickinson and who has become my email buddy and has helped us shepherd this process through email. And then, of course, Linda Frenette, Morrisville Chamber of Commerce President, who is our partner in these projects. And each of them will speak a few words before you open the public hearing, please. So I'm going to hope Mr. Bendeky is listening and is ready to speak.
I am here, and, and I am hoping that you all can hear me. I would like to begin by apologizing that I can't be there with you in person. I'm actually calling from California, but I am hopeful that, that I will be able to meet many of you in person when our lab opens either late this year or early next. I, I want to begin by thanking you for the incentives that, that have been offered to us, which have made a difference in our decision, but more importantly, for the, for the enthusiasm with which you have welcomed us to your community. It, it really means a lot to us, and, and if I may impose for just a couple of minutes, I'd like to tell you just a little bit about Invite. Some of you may remember around 20 years ago, as the sequencing of the human genome, as we somewhat naively referred to it in those days, was being completed. Many of us anticipated the day in which the cost to sequence an individual's genome would become so inexpensive that the information would be available, as a matter of course, for all patients to inform their treatment, either over the course of treating a disease or over the course of a patient's lifetime. When Invite was founded in 2010 in San Francisco, genetics was really not being done to any significant degree. It was expensive, it took a long time, and it was hard to find where one could get a genetic test. And so we were founded with the mission of making the promise of the human genome a practical reality. And in the 11 years since then, we have devoted our efforts to reducing the cost of testing, expanding our test menu so that it would be convenient for people to know where to go to get genetic testing, and otherwise to remove the barriers to access to genetic testing for everyone, including populations that have traditionally been underserved by our health care system. When we founded our, when we began to offer testing in 2013, we began with a handful of genetic tests focused primarily on cancer. Today, we offer testing for virtually every adult and pediatric inherited disease, and we're, we're particularly proud of our pediatric test menu, where years ago, parents would spend years and untold thousands of dollars just trying to figure out what was wrong with their seriously ill children. And now it is possible to order a comprehensive genetic test for a few hundred dollars that, that provides answers and clarity on the path forward to, to parents and their children. We also now, for cancer patients, offer tumor profiling and tests for monitoring response to treatment and the disease progression to make the promise of precision medicine and tailored therapies for cancer patients a reality. And we also have a comprehensive reproductive health test menu for families that want to make sure that they are going to have a healthy baby. And as a result of our investment, this year, we expect to test somewhere north of a million patients, predominantly out of our primary laboratory in San Francisco. We have a handful of smaller laboratories, but most of our testing is run out of our San Francisco lab, where at these volumes, we are now running 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And so the need for additional lab space and testing capacity became apparent to us last year, and we, we launched our search, looking at locations around the country that might provide a, a great setting for our employees to live, where we could attract and a, a great workforce and help develop the workforce and develop the community, and where we would be geographically cited to, to address patient communities that are distance from San Francisco. And the, the reception that we've received from the state, from Wake County, and from the town of Morrisville have really made a big difference in our decision to locate there at The Stitch. The first phase of the, of the planned, our planned expansion will allow us to double our capacity, so we will, we will be able to run approximately the same number of tests in Morrisville that we run in San Francisco. And in the Phase 2 expansion, we will again add another, we will double our capacity there. And so we are very excited to be there, and, and I, I just want to conclude by saying that we try very hard at Invite to be a good corporate citizen and to participate beyond just doing our jobs, to participate in the communities to which we belong. Listening to the proceedings today, it's very apparent to me what a tight-knit and supportive community you have there, and I just want to assure you that we will work very hard to make you proud of your decision to welcome us to your community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor, Protem, members of council. I just wanted to speak very briefly and just say thank you. This has been incredibly good experience, the whole recruitment, the working with the town. Town Manager Page has been phenomenal to work with at every turn. There's been a lot of details we've had to work through, and as you said, we've been email buddies and phone buddies, and, and so we've worked very, very hard on this, and I just want to commend the staff for their efforts, and particularly Town Manager Page, and, and how good of a job the town has done with this, and how excited the company is and we are with this project. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Dave. This is Linda's first biggie, so I'm really happy for her. Linda?
On behalf of the Morrisville Chamber of Commerce, I wanted to thank Town Manager Page, Mayor, and Council for all of your efforts and your incentive package that helped bring Invite to Morrisville. We know that they will not only be a good corporate citizen but an asset to Morrisville, and we offer and extend a very warm welcome to Invite, and the Chamber of Commerce stands ready to serve Invite in any way possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to turn it back over to you.
Okay, excellent. Yes, we welcome Invite with open arms. Glad to have you a part of our community. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have any public hearing comments? Town Clerk Smith?
No, sorry, there were no comments received for the public hearing.
Okay. Can we have a staff member check the lobby to make sure we don't have anyone out there Insofar as there is some urgency to go ahead and take a vote on this tonight, I'd entertain a motion to close this public hearing at this time.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing effective immediately, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing is closed. That passed 6-0 unanimously. I'd go ahead and take a motion, and then we can have any discussion or comments at this time. Is there a motion and second on Resolution 2021-179-0?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-179-0 of the Morrisville Council authorizing an incentive agreement with Invite Corporation.
A second?
Okay. I have a motion and second. Would anyone like to make any comments or have any discussion on this motion? I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rowe, please.
Well, thank you. I just want to thank the Chamber, the state of North Carolina, and Invite, if they're still on the phone, for their investment. We're grateful. It seems like just the other day, when we came back from our retreat in Kannapolis, and we were still wondering what would happen with them all, and we're so delighted that Equator Capital made this acquisition, and this great investment is coming into Morrisville. And so we just are so excited. You know, they say the industries of the future are artificial intelligence, cybersecurity, robotics, and genomics, and we have now all four in Morrisville with such a market-leading company in genetics and genetics testing. So this is a game-changing day for Morrisville, and I want to thank Invite for thinking, thinking of Morrisville to be their new home, and hopefully you can get many more companies from California to do the same. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to recognize Mayor Protem Johnson, please.
So I just want to, while Mr. Bendeky is still on the phone, to thank him for his comments tonight and for his introduction to Invite and, and the work that they're doing. And I especially want to thank him for his comments about our staff and our chamber and all those that were involved, and I especially liked his comment about being a good corporate citizen. We, we are blessed to have very good corporate citizens here in the Morrisville, so you will be in good company, but welcome.
Seeing none of the others, all those in favor of approving this resolution, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. That passes unanimously 6-0. Welcome, Invite. We look forward to working with you and collaborating with you going forward. Thank you, Town Manager Page.
Thank you, Mr. Bendeky.
Ben Howell, our long-range planning manager, will facilitate the next public hearing item. Mr. Howell?
So tonight, I'm here... So, tonight, I'm here to present information about our most recent set of unified, proposed Unified Development Ordinance Amendments, and these are dealing with access and circulation. So, just a quick little background, council directed staff to work on these text amendments, actually back in the 2020 Town Council Retreat. And so, staff has obviously been hard at work on these text amendments for quite a while. We've had some staff turnover, and that delayed things, but we're glad to be presenting these to you tonight. So, included with access, circulation, are standards and requirements for infrastructure improvements in accordance with the Conference of Transportation Plan, transportation impact analyses, vehicular, bicycle, and pedestrian connectivity, as well as vehicular access management. And we've also included a couple of additional sections, one minor amendment to Section 4.3.3(c), and then a new Section 9.8 detailing non-conforming regulations. And this slide here just is a quick summary of all the different sections that include proposed amendments. I will not read them all out here, but starting with Section 4.3.3(c), most of the amendments are in Section 5.8, and then we have a few in Section 9.8. And so, for the next few minutes, I'm going to go through these amendments one by one, and I will break at a court, at proper places to provide you an opportunity to ask any questions. I've tried to break it up by topic area, so that we can hopefully keep the questions together and also keep the presentation moving. So, the first proposed amendments are to Section 4.3.3(c). Again, this is dealing with accessory uses and structures in the right-of-way. This is a fairly simple amendment. We are just deleting out the Main Street classification and deleting out the reference to Table 5.8.6(c). Again, the table is proposed to be deleted, and I will get into that a little bit later in the presentation, but primarily because the town streets classifications are in the Conference of Transportation Plan. And again, we no longer have a Main Street classification in our plan itself. Next, we have amended, we're proposing amendments to the applicability section, and these amendments primarily are to break up the applicability between new development, and we included three new classifications of existing development, change in use, expansion, and redevelopment. And again, these proposed amendments are meant to address how the standards and requirements in Section 5.8 apply to these different classes of development. Next is looking at Section 5.8.5, and these are, these are looking at requirements for improvements, and we've broken up what previously was two classes of improvement, of transportation improvements to three classes. The first one is onsite improvements. And again, these amendments for the onsite improvements are just clarifying the requirements for when onsite transportation infrastructure improvements are required. And then, as you'll see in just a minute, we've added a new frontage classification, and then an other classification. As I mentioned, this, the new classification development frontage is really meant to clarify that it is required for development to provide transportation infrastructure improvements along the development frontage. Before, this was not very clear with how our regulations were written, so we did want to clarify that we do expect and require improvements along the frontage. And then finally, we have other improvements, previously termed offsite improvements, and this language was written to really clarify when the development will be required to provide improvements or payment in lieu of improvements based on information in the TIA. Again, the purpose of this was really to clarify the requirements and include the requirement for proportional payment in lieu, which has been our standard now for quite a while. And then next, we have Section 5.8.6a, which is circulation plan, and this is just clarifying the information that is required to be displayed on the circulation plan, allowing, and also allowing the planning director in consultation with the fire marshal to waive the requirement if the necessary information can be displayed on the site plan. And at this point, I will take a break and see if there's any questions on the applicability or the improvements sections or on the circulation plan.
Seeing none, I think you can proceed.
Okay, great. Next up, we get to everyone's favorite topic, transportation impact analyses. And so, our First Amendment is to the general thresholds. Again, we did not change our primary thresholds of 100 trips per hour or 1,000 trips per day, but we did delete some of the more subjective thresholds and clarified how the number of vehicle trips generated by development will be calculated to determine if a TIA will be required. And we also clarified the TIA's are required for certain rezonings and comprehensive plan Next, we also clarified that vested developments will not be required to provide an updated TIA, and we also clarified when TIA, but we did clarify when TIA's will have to be updated for other approved developments that are not necessarily vested. This next, these next couple slides get into some of the meat of the amendments related to our TIA. We included some proposed amendments to our scoping meeting requirements to clarify items that will need to be discussed during the scoping meeting, as well as clarifying the requirement for the MOU, and then also moving the content and standards section out of the UDO and into the administrative manual. The TIA content requirements and standards are proposed to be moved to the administrative manual to provide more flexibility to address a lot of the unique circumstances we see, and also address changes in TIA software and methods that are seeming to be constantly changing. But as a reminder, we do have a third-party consultant that works with us to review the TIA's, so of course, we always do have our third-party consultant ensure during the scoping and the MOU process that we will still get a complete and proper TIA. Next amendment is to the identified improvement section. It previously was termed recommended improvements, and we actually revised recommended to identified based specifically on some stakeholder feedback we received during a stakeholder meeting we held earlier, actually in late 2020. And the this section, the amendments to this section also clarify the required infrastructure improvements, which required infrastructure improvements must be identified in the TIA based on standards for level of service and delay. And then we also revised Section 58b5, which was previously incorporation of recommended improvements into the proposed development or decision, again, replaced recommended with identified, and clarified how the improvements that are identified in the TIA would be included, would be incorporated into a development decision, clarified our standard for payment in lieu, and also clarified that the planning director has the authority to consider the incorporation of the identified improvements in any administrative decision to approve or deny the development application. And with that, I'll take another break and see if there were any questions on that section, on those sections.
I think we're good with those changes as well, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you. Next up, our proposed amendments to Section 586c, which is, was our vehicular accessway classification section. We are actually deleting most of that entire section, including the table. And again, that's because our road classifications are actually in our CTP, and we haven't really used this section as staff in administering the UDO or reviewing development. Next up, we have some amendments to our required multiple means of vehicular access. And as you'll see here, there's a lot of red strike-through, and that's essentially, we are deleting the, a lot of the existing language because it's really duplicative of the Fire Code, and instead, we're replacing it with a direct reference to the Fire Code, as that is what really guides in these situations. Next, we have some amendments to our public street connectivity requirements. As you'll see here, the primary amendment is deleting the requirement for additional vehicular access points based on the number of vehicles per day. We, as staff, have not really used this standard, and we researched and could not find another jurisdiction that had a similar standard, so we're proposing just to delete it outright. Next, we have some amendments to our cross-access standards. We are clarifying when vehicular cross-access will be required, and you'll see there, one of the First Amendments you'll notice are strike-throughs, is removing single-family attached. And I did want to point out that that is being exempted because single-family attached uses are already required to have access via public streets, so they would be covered under the public street connectivity standards versus the cross-access standards. And then to finish up the proposed amendments for the cross-access standards, again, we clarified circumstances when the, where the requirements can be waived by the planning director or the town engineer. We added some flexibility into the waiver requirements to, again, address a lot of the unique circumstances that we have found and that we have seen more and more in developments. And we also added a reference to the relatively new allowance that we put into our code a couple of years ago to allow a payment in lieu of cross-access improvements. And so, we now have that referenced. And with that, I'll take a break and see if there were any questions on those last few slides.
I don't see any questions.
Okay, great.
Please proceed.
Next, we're getting into our access management requirements. These first set of amendments on this slide deal with limitation of, on direct driveway access along thoroughfares. Again, we proposed some amendments to clarify that direct driveway access under a thoroughfare is allowed only if there's not an alternative access onto a lower classified roadway, and we also deleted the standard that was based on trip generation, as it was not used by staff or development. Next, we addressed our spacing of driveway intersections. We included some new language specifying how existing driveways that do not meet spacing standards will be allowed to be utilized by new development, and we also added flexibility for development on parcels with existing driveways that would not meet the spacing Next, we added new language with flexibility to address circumstances where development on a parcel cannot meet the driveway spacing standards with new driveways, both when they, and as you'll see, there's a new number three there that addresses circumstances where they may be able to get cross-access through an adjoining property if they can, and if it's there, they have to utilize it, or if not, we added standards for when they can get a new driveway even if it cannot meet our spacing standards. And finally, you'll see all the strike-through text at the bottom. That was our previous driveway intersection spacing standards in text. We removed all that and put it into a table that hopefully is a lot easier to use. And we also added a new spacing requirement between driveways on thoroughfares and collectors, which we previously did not really have in the code. And with that, I'll take, see if there's any questions on our driveway spacing standards.
Okay, seeing no questions on driveway spacing standards.
Okay, great.
I apologize. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Fender, please.
Hi. Actually, I have a question on the previous set of slides under 5.8.6d5. The point where number five, require connection through an adjoining property zone as park green space or open space. What if that property is zoned PGO, and there is a park already on it, would you still, would they still be able to ask for an exemption?
Yes.
Okay. But I guess the planning director, town engineer could deny that exemption.
Correct. Yeah, all these waivers are required to be applied for.
Well, I guess I would prefer to see that if they're connected to a park that's already established, that the developer be required to provide that connector.
One thing to remember with this, this is vehicular cross-access, and so, we do have situations where it may not make sense to have a vehicular cross-access connected to a park if it's, you know, if that part of the park adjoining the development is a ball field.
Right, right. So, this particular section right here is just vehicular?
Correct, and we address pedestrian later on.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Seeing nothing else at this time.
Okay. Next is our fire lanes, and we just, again, this is a simplification amendment to clarify that fire lanes should be installed in compliance with the Fire Code. Next, we are proposing some amendments regarding our stacking spaces. This one is actually, again, specifically based on stakeholder feedback, and it's adding a requirement for stacking spaces to be based on a queuing analysis conducted as part of a TIA for uses that are, that require a TIA. So, for example, if a drive-through use had to have a TIA as part of their development plan, instead of relying on the table, we would have the TIA tell us how many queuing spaces or stacking spaces they would be required to have. Next, we made some minor amendments to the design and layout of stacking spaces regulations. Again, this was actually based on research of surrounding jurisdictions. We revised requirements for how stacking spaces for drive-through uses must be designed and separated from other vehicular movements, both on and off-site. And with that, I'll take a quick break, see if there are any questions on the stacking spaces.
Okay, seeing none.
Okay. Next, we get into our bicycle access circulation. There were some significant amendments to this section. The goal of all these amendments really are to simplify the language in the section to clarify the bicycle infrastructures required in accordance with the CTP. And then, we deleted a large portion of it and then included, just revised the section reference for bikeway design standards. And so, the section that we deleted dealt with bicycle connectivity, and we deleted that because for the most, for, because bicycle connectivity is covered both under vehicular and pedestrian connectivity. So, we had a lot of language that was very similar, and really, we can cover it under other sections that we didn't need it here. Next, we move on to the pedestrian access circulation section. You'll see here, 588a1, general pedestrian access. We did remove the single-family home exemption from the requirement to construct sidewalks, and we also clarified that sidewalks are required to access off-street bicycle parking. Next, we, again, removed the single-family home exemption for the requirement to construct sidewalks, and clarified that sidewalks must be connected to all streets along the frontage, whereas previously, we didn't really have that requirement. It just was required to connect to one street. So now, a development on a corner has to connect their sidewalks to both streets instead of just one. Next, we removed this exemption for single-family detached subdivisions to incorporate and construct greenways, and then we added a new section related to greenway connectors, which is a new classification of infrastructure that we included in our CTP. And so, we now have a require, we will now have, if these amendments are approved, the requirement in our UDO for new development to construct these greenway connectors if they're developing a parcel that, where they're shown on the CTP. they're developing a parcel that, where they're shown on the CTP. Next, under pedestrian connectivity, we are recommending to delete subsection 1, which deals with walkway connections to, from adjoining development and developable land. And then, we are proposing some revisions to the pedestrian cut-through requirements. Subsection 1 is proposed to be deleted as it's already covered in other sections of the UDO, primarily in the public street connectivity and pedestrian cross-access requirements. And then, we revised the language in subsection 2 to require pedestrian cut-throughs while also expanding waiver flexibility for this requirement with objective standards. Previously, we had may language where, for pedestrian cut-throughs, which is, and just so you're aware, this is for the requirement if you're, if you have a cul-de-sac near a, that, that, if you have a cul-de-sac and then say just a little bit of ways, you have a public road with a sidewalk. Previously, we had may language where we may require a developer to provide a pedestrian access from that cul-de-sac to the public right-of-way or the other sidewalk network. Now, we do just say it is required. Continuing in pedestrian connectivity, we've, again, removed the single-family attached from the pedestrian cross-access requirement as it's covered under the public street connectivity. And then, we expanded the waiver flexibility for this, for the pedestrian connectivity requirement with objective standards. And I will break here to see if there's any questions on these, on the bicycle or pedestrian sections.
Councilmember Fender, please.
I had a question on the greenway pass, the greenway connector.
Yes.
Well, first, I'm just trying to understand the language. Under A, where it says, "All new development shall incorporate any greenway connector called for across the development site." What does that mean? Across the development site?
So, it, it really means any development that, where in our, if, if a development's located in a area where on our CTP, a greenway connector is called for, they would have to construct that greenway connector, whether it's across or within the development site.
Okay. But we, okay, that's good. But we give them the option to do a payment in lieu?
That's correct. And that's in staying with, for a lot of our infrastructure, we do provide the option to do payment in lieu.
I guess my, my issue there is, like, I can see the, the reasoning for wanting to do a payment in lieu for intersections or roads, because you may want to get, you know, gather enough funds to be able to do the whole intersection. But for the greenway, I, I would rather, I would rather see a developer go ahead and construct the greenway rather than just doing a payment in lieu. And then, you know, there's no, there's an indeterminate amount of time before that greenway ever does get constructed on that piece of property.
So, I will say, in this section, we, and as a reminder, with our payment in lieu requirements, it's always, you, you can always request payment in lieu. It's not guaranteed that you will be approved to, to only have to pay a fee in lieu instead of construction. When they do, when they are approved to do a payment in lieu, it is at 150% of the construction cost estimate. So, it is, they do pay a premium for it. I don't necessarily see it used very often in this circumstance, but there may be times when a portion of a development site includes a portion of a greenway connector, but they really need to be able to go on to another site in order to fully construct that greenway connector. So, in that case, payment in lieu may make sense. And then, the next development where they have part of the greenway connector on their property, they would be required to develop it all and we would work with them to, to provide them the payment in lieu from the first development to construct the portion that should have been on the first development site. So, it, it's really meant to provide some flexibility there for circumstan, in circumstances when we may have, when a development may not be able to completely construct a required piece of infrastructure.
Wasn't there a recent development, one of the town home developments along Church Street, that has put in the, the, the greenway and it's just a segment?
Yes.
I mean, so, I don't see why that couldn't be done in other cases. I understand the need for, for flexibility. I think in this case, I would rather not see that much flexibility. Putting in a greenway is not that difficult for the developer to go and do at that time and will have it rather than waiting god knows how many years before that greenway finally gets put in, in that neighborhood. That's all I have.
Okay. If I could sort of piggyback on that, um, so, did I hear correctly when you said that it will be up to us to say yes or no to PIL? Or would this be an administrative decision for some developments?
In mo, in a lot of cases, it would probably be an administrative decision. If it is, if I remember correctly, the way we have our PIL language written now, for the most part, it is an administrative decision unless it's a rezoning or, or even a special use permit that may come before the board. But for the most part, since a lot of our development approvals are now administrative, the decision to accept payment in lieu or not would be an administrative decision.
And conducted by staff?
Yes.
So, I guess, discussion, it might not affect this process right now, is how can this council give direction about what we would like to be the policy in enacting that? To give staff really clear direction that, Councilmember Fender, myself, I'm not sure who else, really wants those things built now, excepting the exception like behind Park West Village, when you were talking about, it comes to a stream, they can't construct their entire half, so they did PIL for that part. But for the rest, it was done. So, what would be a good way to have this council have that discussion to make sure that staff really understands what our desire is when it comes to approving those?
For that, I'll defer to Planning Director Stiegel or Town Manager Page.
And I'll say, in a lot of ways, that really is a, a policy decision. In the past, just historically, if we've had a segment of greenway that's required on a property, but there's nothing on either side of it, we have allowed a number of payment in loos, just so a segment isn't being constructed in and of itself and it doesn't lead anywhere. You know, we have waited until we could get a larger stretch done at once. If that is something, you know, council wants to change and look at differently, we could obviously have that discussion. I would argue for at least some flexibility for payment in lieu. There have been other times where a developer has constructed the greenway, but they may stop, you know, 100 feet short of the property line because they hit a stream buffer. And that stream buffer extends to the next property. And so, you want that whole crossing, which is a lot of times a boardwalk, to be constructed at once. And so, we do need some flexibility in those kinds of situations, to stop short of a property line and go back when that whole section can be completed because we're hitting an environmental feature or something like that.
Yep. As for the stream that we were talking about behind Park West and the Bristol. So, yeah, if staff can, oh, yeah, I think we'd be interested in having staff. We want to provide you the flexibility, but we want to make sure that we don't have too many orphan segments, especially as we're getting towards build-out, because I imagine there's no time to wait. Things are going to be connecting soon enough anyway. Mayor Protem Johnson.
So, I was just going to say, I think staff wants the greenways built as much as we, council and the public want greenways built. So, let, let, let's kind of level set right there. I, I understand the flexibility. I think that is important. Would it help to offer some stronger language, like, it is highly encouraged, you know, and, and a request for, you know, payment in lieu needs to be extraordinary? I mean, some kind of language to kind of make it clear that a waiver or a request is, it needs to be extraordinary. I guess that's the only word I can think of. And I'm not sure, I'm not sure if we want to put real, real, specific wording around it, because that's when we get ourselves in a bind, when we box ourselves too much. So, leaving flexibility is important, but if we could beef up the wording, that might be helpful. That's my two cents.
Would any other council members like to make a comment on that before we take a little second round? Okay, I recognize Councilmember Fender, please.
I'm wondering whether, I guess I'm borrowing an idea from the mayor Protem, use language that's similar to some previous sections where it says, "The planning director or the town engineer can approve a waiver in these circumstances." Take away the, the option of doing payment in lieu and, but add a waiver and that could be granted by the town engineer and the planning director and provide payment in lieu in that case. Is that, I think we are, that we give the developers too much flexibility. This is one area where it's not that big of a deal to just put a greenway in. How long has it been just to get that greenway finished at the town hall subdivision? Or get in the, what is the greenway that goes along Church Street that's in our plan that's not there, except for that little portion in that town home subdivision?
Sawmill?
Yeah. Yeah. So, I think we need a way to make them do the greenway.
So, can I follow up?
Yep, please.
So, I hope I didn't mess up by, I, I entered, I think I, I said waiver and payment in lieu and I, I mixed up some wording. So, I want to be clear. Payment in lieu is important because, or the term payment in lieu, because it, the definition is at 150% of construction cost is what, what, what results from payment in lieu. A waiver is a little different. So, I want to make sure that I didn't mess up conversation there. I, I want to, if, if there is a, an opportunity that, that staff gives them the, the option of payment in lieu, it still needs to be at the 150% of construction cost. That, that's, that, I don't want to make sure we don't lose sight of that.
Okay. So, there isn't a lot of urgency on this one, so we have until June 8th to approve. So, I think staff maybe can come back with something a little, little different, give us a little bit more comfort around this issue.
Okay.
Or as an option.
All right.
Okay. Anything else on this section? Okay, seeing none at this time. Mr. Howell?
And then, finishing up our package of proposed text amendments, going to section 9.8, which is a new section dealing with non-conforming access circulation features. We, our current UDO language really does not address non-conforming access circulation features, so this is just adding in specific language to address features that are non-conforming. And, and so, you'll see here, we added in a definition and then some general regulation change, language, and then specifically addressed when non-conforming features would need to be upgraded. And then, also included our regular language, norm, our language, which is in our non-conforming section, dealing with compliance to maximum extent practicable. And then, again, just to finish up, we have proposed revisions to administrative manual to address the process and TIA content and analysis standards, which you'll see, that's attachment to in your packet. A lot of the, the, moving the TIA content analysis standards from the UDO to the administrative manual to provide the flexibility was actually recommended by the town's professional third-party review consultant back in 2015. And it's just taken us this long to finally get the amendment put in place. But that was also endorsed during the stakeholder engagement in December. And as a reminder, the administrative manual is not approved by council. That is an administrative process document that we amend and approve administratively, but I wanted to make sure that you saw what we were proposing, the changes proposed to the administrative manual and see that we're not removing anything that was previously in our UDO. The PCB unanimously recommended approval of the Resolution 2021-137-0 pertaining to the adoption of a planned consistency review statement for the text amendments. When they heard this back in April, and they also unanimously recommended approval of the proposed text amendments. And then, in, on June 8th, council will be requested to approve the resolution pertaining to the adoption of planned consistency review statement based on your action on the 160D text amendments that Chris will be presenting shortly. And also, you'll also be asked to approve the ordinance with the text amendments.
That's a 39-slide deck that you got us through very nicely. Thank you very much, Mr. Howell. Mayor Protem Johnson.
So, Ben, I just have a, a quick question. I think I've asked this before. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask again. When we make these changes, we, we do the, we do, we make these changes with the intent of making things better, to improve a process or prove, improve development. And the outset is not to do any harm, obviously, but sometimes we do do harm. Sometimes we find out that changes we made, maybe harm is too harsh a word, but they didn't, they, they don't have the desired outcomes that we anticipated. So, if that's the case when we're going through this, how quickly are we going to be able to correct ourselves? And, and I, and I say that knowing full well that you've put a lot of time and effort into this to get it right. I, I understand the amount of effort that went in it on, on our staff's behalf as well as, you know, communicating with the, with the development community and with, with council at retreats and, you know, we've all are, are, assume that we're doing the right thing and we're doing the best, but occasionally, we, we need to continue to tweak. So, just tell me how we're going to do that moving forward and how cumbersome or not will that be?
Well, I mean, as usual, we do, you know, in planning, we're constantly look, reading and, and working with the UDO day in, day out. We do keep an ongoing list of things that need to be fixed or amendments that should be done. So, we will certainly, as we begin to implement these amendments and begin to work with them with development, we'll keep an eye out for, you know, places where they don't work. Hopefully, we won't have that. If we do, hopefully, it'll be something small and it'll be a small tweak that we could easily bring back relatively quickly. This was more of a wholesale rewrite, so it did take a longer amount of time. But, you know, if it's, if it is a smaller item, we can generally get those through a little bit quicker. It, a lot of it ultimately, you know, depends on our staff capacity, but as we're getting back up to full staff, hopefully, you know, we'll, we'll be able to do that easier.
Okay, thank you. And, and, yeah, and again, I know this was a Herculean effort, because you, you had to compare text and other, other part of code and, and, like you explained to us tonight, you know, things, part of the code didn't need to be here because it's somewhere else. So, I understand there's, there was a lot of work involved, but, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Howell or staff? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Town Clerk Smith, were there any public hearing comments submitted today?
No, sir. There were no comments received for a public hearing via email and there were no individuals sign up for the public hearing address.
Can we just check the lobby real quick again? Seeing none. As this item does not have any urgency associated with it, and it's slated for vote on June 8th, I'd prefer to keep the public hearing open at this time, but I would entertain a motion to close it, if that's the will of the council. I'm not hearing a motion, so that's going to stay open. So, maybe on the 25th, we can do a quick check-in, see if there's any public hearing comments, and if there're not, there'll just be a quick, no updates, and we'll close the public hearing at this time and still do a vote on June 8th. Does that meet staff's needs?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all very much. At this time, it is 7:30 and this, my red-line agenda says this is time for a break. So, let's go ahead. We're right on time, which is very exciting. I don't know if that's ever happened. So, if we could please reconvene at 7:41? So if we could please reconvene at 7:41? We are now at Item 12. There are two action items on tonight's agenda. Consideration of annexation for property located at 703 Church Street and consideration of text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance related to Chapter 160D of the North Carolina General Statutes. Aaron Pritchard, Planner 2, will facilitate the first item. Mr. Pritchard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. My name is Aaron Pritchard. I am a Planner 2 in the town's Planning Department. I started here at the end of November last year. So been here for a little while, but this is my first time coming before you. So I just wanted to say hello. I've had the chance to meet a few of you, but yeah, I hope to meet the rest of you and see you many times henceforth, so thank you. I'm here tonight to present a petition for annexation for the parcel located, probably would help you if I pulled up my PowerPoint, right? Located at 703 Church Street. Ah, there it is, yeah. 703 Church Street, if you're not familiar precisely where it is, it is just across from Springfield Valley Road, right across from the Waterford Department Homes on Church Street. It's near the intersection with Traybrook Drive, so just up the street here, a few blocks, so. I'll go to the next slide. This is an aerial photo of the site. As you can see there, the Sterling Montessori Schools parking lot is just to the west. The parcel itself is, it's a county island of unincorporated land. It's kind of like right in the middle of the town. Town land borders it to every direction, east, west, north, and south. The applicant or owner of the site is Smile Investments LLC. The property itself is 2/3 of an acre in total area and it's zoned O.I., that's Office Institutional. The current land use for the site is a vacant, single-family detached home. And the site is intended for a daycare center, which is actually currently undergoing site plan review by my colleague Emily Langston in the Planning Department. So yeah, we as the planning staff recommend that council approves the annexation. And as you can see, there's several reasons listed on your screen. Just to name a few, the site is already surrounded by the town's corporate limits. The owner is also voluntarily requesting annexation. And the proposed daycare center would be a good use for the site. The current use for it is just vacant, single-family, there's nothing there at the moment. Moving right along here, we recommend approval of the two resolutions. So we have two resolutions, which I'll pull up here momentarily. Resolution A, which pertains to the sufficiency of the annexation petition. And Resolution B, which sets the date of the public hearing, which we recommend holding at the next regular session of this body on May 25th. So as I mentioned, May 25th would be the public hearing. And the ordinance, you know, the final vote on adding the parcel to the town would be on June 8th, 2021, two weeks, sorry, after the next meeting, so. Yeah, we believe that that will keep the petitioner's requests going through on a reasonable timeframe. And yeah, that's it for me. So if you have any additional questions, happy to answer them now.
Any questions for Mr. Pritchard?
I can pull up the resolutions here. Give me one moment. So Resolution A. I lost it, hold on one second. There it is, yeah, there's Resolution A.
Okay, would anyone like to read that for our vote to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-182-0A of the Mooresville Town Council pertaining to the sufficiency of the position to extend the Town of Mooresville corporate limits to include property located along the west side of Church Street at the intersection with Springfield Valley Road, commonly known as 703 Church Street, Annex 619-2020.
Second?
I don't have my glasses on, is that 609 or 619?
I'm sorry, what?
Is it 619 or 609?
619-2020.
Sorry, okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes 6-0 unanimously. If you could bring up the second one, please, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sorry, I'd entertain a motion if someone wants to go ahead and read that one.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-182-0B of the Mooresville Town Council setting a date for public hearing on the question of voluntary annexation for property located along the west side of Church Street at the intersection with Springfield Valley Road, commonly known as 703 Church Street, Annex 619-2020.
Second?
Does that motion need to have the actual date associated with it? Because it's not in the motion or not?
I don't believe so.
Because it's in the body of the document?
I'm sorry, say that one more time?
It's in the body of the document, the date, so it doesn't have to be part of the motion?
I'm.
That's correct. It's in the resolution.
Thank you.
Sorry, I wasn't sure.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries 6-0 as well unanimously. Thank you very much, sir. And we'll see you back here on the 25th of public hearing. And welcome to the town. We appreciate you being part of the team.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Okay, Chris Lawson, Planning Manager, will facilitate the next item.
Good evening, council. I have one update from a previous meeting. Councilmember Rabadi caught some unclear language that I proposed related to development applications that town council has to approve. I have changed that language in your ordinance and now it is clear that if town council approves a development application, any proposed increase in residential density will then have to be re-approved by town council. Previously, staff was allowed a certain percentage to administratively approve. Beyond that, that's my only update I can go over. Any questions you may have? And I believe you're scheduled to vote tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Lawson? Okay, if you want to bring up the language for a motion, then.
Not sure where the resolution is on the, yeah. And Eric, did they have a script also?
I'm sorry, a little louder? Okay, would anyone like to make this motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-113-0 of the Mooresville Town Council pertaining to the adoption of a planned consistency review statement for text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance related to Chapter 160D of the North Carolina General Statutes, UDO Amendment 21-0003.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion and a second by Councilmember Fender. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously 6-0. If you can bring up the ordinance. Would anyone like to make this motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 2021-113-0 of the Mooresville Town Council approving text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance related to Chapter 160D of the North Carolina General Statute, UDO Amendment 21-0003.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? This carries 6-0 unanimously as well. Thank you very much, Mr. Lawson, appreciate it.
Thank you.
We are now at Item 13, Future Meetings, Events, and Citizen Involvement Opportunities. For a full listing of events, please see the town calendar at www.townofmooresville.org. Just want to share that this Saturday will be very busy in Mooresville. On Saturday, the 15th, from 2 till 6 p.m. In keeping with the spirit of Spring Fest's past, the town will shut downtown hall and offer food trucks and entertainment. All activities will be modified and socially distanced to comply with current COVID-19 restrictions. The town is introducing a new element to this year's celebration. Residents can take part in either a virtual 5K or virtual seven-mile Spring Fest race. Visit the town website and follow our social media accounts for more information. As always, you can choose to start your Saturday at the Western Wake Farmers Market. It's open from 8 a.m. until noon on Town Hall Drive at our Healthy Food Hub. Western Region Food Security Network will be distributing free dry goods, produce, and hot meals at Mooresville Elementary School from 11:30 a.m. till 1 p.m. on Saturday. Also, this is very up-to-date news. The Hindu Society of North Carolina is partnering with Eastern Carolina Medical Center and the Town of Mooresville to provide free COVID-19 vaccination event at their location 309 Aviation Parkway on Saturday. Pfizer vaccine is expected to be available for children ages 12 and older. Registration is required. Please see social media, including facebook.com/hsnctempel for the registration link. At this time, we are at Council and Manager Comments and I will be recognizing council members in turn. We'll start with Councilmember Garamella, please.
I have no comments.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, please.
So first, I want to say how happy and pleased I am that we're beginning in-person events again. We had our two bond open houses that were in-person events, movies in the park, and of course, Spring Fest that's coming up and music at the hub. So I am thrilled that we're starting to be able to see each other again and of course, while exercising safety precautions. So I'm pleased about that. I've had the opportunity also to attend some of the Mooresville Senior Center programs in the last couple of weeks. So all of you that are 55 and older, you are eligible for those senior center events too. And they're, they're really wonderful. I've had a good time, they're a lot of fun. And our Parks and Recs Department just recently posted on social media about how exercising is so much fun in a group. So I will tell you from experience at our Mooresville Senior Center, that is true. I also had the opportunity to speak at a Mother's Day event yesterday. And one of the things I mentioned during the event was how devastated I am and feel for a lot of our residents who have family and friends in other countries that are suffering and struggling mightily from this COVID pandemic. And of course, our Indian residents are probably affected more than anyone else, but they're not the only ones. We have a diverse international community here and there are many nations that are suffering from COVID and the lax of vaccinations. So I just want to say that my thoughts are with you all and you are absolutely in my prayers. And last, I want to say that today is the last day of Ramadan. So to my family, friends, and to our Mooresville residents that celebrated the holy month of Ramadan, may the Eid bring lots of happiness in your life and may you celebrate with all your close friends and family, Eid Mubarak.
Councilmember Rao, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy Ramadan to the Muslim community. Special thanks again to Councilmember Garamella, the agency volunteers, and Eastern Carolina Medical Center for all of their work on the vaccine clinic. Also want to thank Shiloh Missionary Baptist Church and the work for the N C N C, the work that they did on their COVID vaccine clinics. I just wanted to take one minute just to make a quick comment about India, just to share a different perspective. I recently saw a eulogy given by the famous journalist Fareed Zakaria, who eulogized his mother on a live show on GPS Global Public Square, honoring his mother Fatima Zakaria, who was a renowned journalist in her own right. He was not able to thank the woman who raised him, who was a mentor to him, that sacrificed so much that he could come to this country and become a journalist himself. And he, as an immigrant, just like Councilmember Garamella and my parents, said that he often looked at immigration as the positive economic impact of the great life we can have in America, where we often forget the sadness of immigration. He would remember his mother weeping that she would have to let her children leave India to come here. And it's this distance and sadness that he felt when he could not even thank his own mother, his hero, or barrier. These words from Mr. Zakaria brought tremendous emotion to me as I have spoken to many people in our community, including many of Councilmember Garamella's friends and we pray for his family and friends in Mumbai, aunts and uncles, my 92-year-old uncle with COVID-19, who cannot even get the vaccine because he has congestive heart failure. This fear and darkness and sadness, as Mayor Pro Tem Johnson said, is being felt by so many of our Indian-American community in Mooresville and carry in the triangle. And I just want to let you all know that we are with you and we will not let you face the darkness and sadness alone. And on that note, I want to challenge everyone listening in Mooresville and the region to honor what President Biden inspired our nation, that America has never known hope. He's always challenged that America always finds a way to have fear overcome hope and light overcome darkness. And now it's our time to do that for India. And we can do that by a number of organizations. So there's BIPs charities, Sayware USA, Desai Foundation. And I'm also asking the technology community, because the Indian-American community has done so much to build the technology infrastructure of our nation, along with that in pharma and life science and research. And so if you're listening, you know, whatever we can do as councilmembers and colleagues to reach out, to raise money to these organizations so we can add to the $100 million that Biden, this president, is sending to India for PPE. It costs about $700 for an oxygen generator to get to the rural areas. And I just, I'm sorry I went over my time, but it just really struck a chord with me in terms of just seeing Fareed Zakaria talk about that story. But that story is being felt by so many people. And so let's do what we can to bring light to India and get them out of the darkness. Thank you.
Councilmember Fender, please.
I don't have any comments. I'm just very grateful to see Councilmember Scruggins Johnson and Councilmember Garamella in person. Good to see you guys.
Councilmember Scruggins Johnson, please.
It's wonderful to see the council as well. It was amazing to me how staff supported hybrid meetings, all virtual meetings for so long, well over a year. So I congratulate staff on their endurance and flexibility and innovation. This has been a long, long time for us to be in a state that is just not natural. We like, we really do feed off each other and we do have more robust conversations in person. But I think we did a pretty good job with the virtual and the hybrid. So I appreciate everybody's support. I hope to be back, you know, in person on a regular basis. And I hope we all stay healthy, so it's good to be back and thank you, everybody, for your support.
Yeah, I think we all echo that. I want to say happy Ramadan as well. And I am so glad that we were able to meet again in person. in person to do the work of the town for its residents. The next normal will be different, and we will have to keep being open-minded and agile to meet our potential as individuals and as a community. I'm confident we will succeed, and Morrisville will continue to be the best place to live in America for years to come. Town Manager Page, any comments from staff at this time?
No sir from me, but I'd like to recognize Erin Hudson to provide counsel with the legislative update.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Hudson.
Sorry, I should have been walking faster. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. At your places, you each may recognize that you have a sort of colorful sheet. Staff continues to monitor legislation on a weekly, sometimes daily, basis. As the May 13 crossover deadline approaches, that's this Thursday, bills continue to be filed and moved through committees as their bill sponsors aim to get them through their respective houses and cross over to the next for consideration for the remainder of the long session. As you know, staff has had some concern about a number of the bills proposed that could limit or potentially impact local development authority. We've shared some of these bills with you previously and with our delegates just a few weeks ago back in April. We are sharing five bills with you tonight, which staff is opposed to. Most of them you already have familiarity with. There may be one or two new ones that have just recently been filed. We have provided a bulleted synopsis for you, some bulleted talking points. We've also provided the current bill position and any delegate contacts for the present committee location. NCLM, our North Carolina League of Municipalities, has also stated opposition to two of the five bills that we're sharing with you tonight. They're listed a little bit in order of sort of assumed greatest impact first. We would respectfully request that council take some time tomorrow or Thursday morning and reach out to the delegates that are noted to share our opposition of these bills in advance of the Thursday crossover deadline. Just to tell you how quickly they are moving, the very last bill listed on your last page passed the House today, so it's moving to the Senate. So lots of activity happening at the General Assembly, which, you know, we're all very familiar with, but some of these bills could have some really significant impacts at the local level, and we just really want to sort of do our due diligence to speak up for Morrisville. So happy to answer any questions you all have.
Okay, we have our marching orders to go ahead and make some phone calls. Fortunately, we've developed good relationships with everyone on this list, so these calls should be relatively easy, and hopefully they're already on our side, but we'll do our best.
Yeah, and so also just for the very last one, as I mentioned to the mayor previously before the meeting started, it's a bill related to tree ordinances and property owners' rights. Morrisville has a local act for tree ordinance regulations, so we have some of that authority, but a lot of our area partners do not. But that's the one, again, that moved through the House today and is on its way to the Senate. So my contact there for you is already out of date, so if you would reach out to Senator Nickel, he is probably your best bet for sort of appealing at this point.
Okay.
And happy to share any other contact information you all may need besides what I've provided.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. Great report, and thanks for keeping track of all this for us.
Thank you.
Councilmember Garamella, please, go ahead.
Erin.
Erin, sorry, I didn't see him at first.
Yes.
Do you know, like, you know, for each of the things, what is the financial impact? And I know we oppose it, and we have notes written down there, but the financial impact of each one for our town?
So for some of them, we don't know, only because some of the bill language is very vague, and that's some of staff's concern. We did do a little bit of an assessment for House Bill 865, so it's at the top of page two, because it is proposing privatizing commercial inspections. And part of that bill language is an 80% permit fee reduction for private commercial inspectors. So what our inspection staff did was just crunch a little bit of numbers, and for projected $1 million in permit fee revenue in fiscal year '21, if half of that went to permit holders for opting for private inspectors, it could be over $400,000 lost revenue. You know, that's a significant impact to a small municipality. That'd be a huge impact to areas even smaller than ours. And that's, it's just unknown, because there are so many, again, sort of vague areas in some of these newer bills that have been introduced in the last couple of weeks. And again, I think that's some of staff's concern, is that there's likely some things that maybe just haven't been thought all the way through, at least from the staff's perspective.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Any kind of uncertainty when we're trying to staff up our departments would be really problematic for us as well.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Town Manager Page, any other staff members? No comments? Okay, we are scheduled for a break at this point, but we just sort of took one, so I was wondering if Ms. Hooks would be able to identify a place in about a half hour, 45 minutes through your presentation that would be a good breaking point for a break then?
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't we be a little flexible there, and we'll go ahead and start into our work session. There is one work session on tonight's agenda. FY 2022 Proposed Annual Operating Budget and Related Items. Martha Page, Town Manager, and Jeannie Hooks, Director of Management Services, will facilitate. I pass it to either one of you who would like to speak first.
I'll just mention that we are already working on gathering the information from our session on May 4th, substantial, substantially related to the personnel discussions that we will be bringing you back. We want to add whatever council talks about this evening to that. Our commitment to you is to turn that around to give you as much time as possible before our next work session next Thursday, not this coming Thursday, but next Thursday, so that you have that to look at with enough time to prepare for that May 20th work session. So just wanted you to know that is already, we're working on that, lots of personnel-related information.
Jeannie?
Thanks. A good evening, everyone. We're going to kick off the rehearsal. We're going to start with facts and figures tonight.
Jeannie, can you move your microphone closer?
If we have questions on stuff we talked about last time, you want us to wait until the end, Mayor?
There you go. Excuse me, Councilmember Rao, you are asking a question.
We have questions about stuff you talked about last time. Would you prefer us waiting until she finishes?
So let me go over the process a little bit. Since we're going to go over some, or trying to actually complete all four remaining items tonight, that's facts and figures, reserves, CIP, and the ARPA funds. We want to get through all four of those. At the end, I'm going to pause after we go through all of them, and we'll be able to catch up on any additional questions you had from the previous two, if that's okay.
Yeah, that's perfect. I forgot to mention something on my comments, but I want to ask some questions about the ARP funds for the business communities. That's perfect.
Okay, absolutely. I will pause just in terms of process again, after each segment, so we can talk about what we heard, if there's any information needs that you have or questions. We want to make sure that we're capturing those as we go, and then we'll do that final wrap-up at the end before we hand it over to council for your whole deliberation and really how you want to talk about how you want to process your conversation and review. So with that, I hope that that sounds good to you. All right, we are seeking final guidance before the public hearing on May 25th, so just a reminder, that's your May 20th meeting, so just keep that in mind as we're going. We want to make sure that we leave that plenty of time for the community to hear what your questions were, and that they get that information to be able to see what we're, staff's providing back to you before a public hearing is open. So if everybody's good, let's get started, and we'll go with the first section here, facts and figures. Okay, so in facts and figures, previously we talked about, we put the cart before the horse. We wanted to tell you what the outcomes of the budget were, give you sort of a flavor of the total cost, but now we're going to talk about facts and figures of how we're going to pay for it. And I'm just going to give you a little bit of glimpse of information that's contained in the budget report. Remember, the budget report is truly the primary presentation. It's the thing that has the context and the details necessary throughout your deliberation process. In this section, I'm going to refer to pages 50 and 56 in the budget report. This provides really that budget to actual illustration that's really typical this time of year. We like to look at how we proceeded in previous years and how we measure up in projecting for a future budget. It's typical, and it's very comparative to how other local governments process. So let's talk about a few new things that you're going to, you see in here in our budgets. You've actually already heard of a couple. One in particular is healthcare premiums. So healthcare premiums, we've shifted that into what is a sub-fund. It's a logistical measure. It's still a part of the general fund, but you're going to notice it as a transfer out and not departmentally budgeted. When we report at the end of the fiscal year, we will reallocate that cost back out, the actual cost, so you'll be able to see it through the CAFRA where that expense belongs. But budgetarily, we want to pool those resources. It's a management tool to really be able to manage our payments out each year and reserve anything that's not used budgetarily so that we can manage those premium increases that we experience year over year with healthcare cost. I think this year, we said it was 5% or 6%, I believe, for those premiums. So it's just a, it's a management mechanism. It's still reported as a part of a sub-fund to the general fund. So that's just new, but it does shift the numbers around a little bit with the numbers you see on pages 50 through 56. So just wanted to talk about that. Mostly, what I want to point out, as you look at expenditures in past years to current year we're proposing, department growth can really be observed in a few places here. Public Safety Group, the Functional Group of General Government, Technology specifically, and then Development Services, which is primarily planning, you'll see the growth there, and in Public Works. And that's really due to sustainability, those costs. And each of those groups really directly relates to workforce additions, it relates to innovations that we talked about when we were explaining what those budget priorities were, and expanded services, and the fact that we have to take care and maintain of new facilities and services and existing assets. What is that? That's your MAFC coming online fully. That's expanded footprint, additional cost to maintain it, and you have a senior center that while its leased facility is still our facility that we occupy, and we have to take care and pay those utilities as well. So those are kind of the things that become impactful. It may move a department's budget more materially than just your average inflation of 2% to 3%. And then, of course, we need to take care of the material equipment expenses that we have year over year, and we do what's called replacement planning for those large pieces of equipment. The one that we speak of most primarily is the fire apparatus. So in this case, we need to fund up for a future fire apparatus that's going to occur in 2024. That's a pretty expensive vehicle, and so we're leveraging and allocating dollars now each year to put aside, so that it doesn't take up debt cost for something that has a lifespan as long as it does. So it's just a strategy that we employ. It just preserves that debt service for big, major capital projects that people can see. Other things that you're going to see in Public Works and in IT is those innovation elements, that's solar, sustainability, the Open Data and Smart City initiatives. All of those are new emerging interests that have escalated that cost factor. So we have to put things in place to be able to handle, not just the resources to do the initiatives, but we've got to put workforce in place to actually handle those as well. Okay, so that just gives you a flavor of the expenses. We'll talk with the next slide, how do you pay for it all? So in this budget, we focused on really sustaining core services and embracing those in innovative, emerging interest and services, and restoring those allocations, as I said, to those future capital needs. And not only are you planning for paying for future fire apparatus, but you're also putting aside monies into another capital reserve you created, that's the transportation reserve and another reserve type. So again, you're forward-thinking, you're putting money aside to be able to take care of things in the future, but you're also caring about what you have present today. And that is, we see a lot of priorities and initiatives that are really focused on aesthetics, maintenance of existing assets, as we talked about, that align to the strategic interests of council through your strategic goal, Connect Morrisville. So how we pay for this is we've actually proposed in this budget to hold the tax rate at 36 cents. We're just coming off a revow period where we adjusted that tax rate. This year, we want to hold it at 36 cents. The tax-based growth factor, still a strong 3%, so that just means we're projecting adverum collections at about 3% as well. We are back up to 99.8% collection rate on our adverum, which is amazing after what we have just been through, that we are still maintaining and experiencing that type of collection rate. And that source is about 54% of your total budget. So that's the biggest one we're going to talk about, the most impactful. Other sources that we have here are, obviously, your vehicle tax fees still holding at 30. That's your maximum authority that you have. We have not adjusted the stormwater ERU fee. It's remaining at $25 per ERU, but we've already communicated to council, that's on the horizon, something we have to consider, but we have to do, complete a study to be able to understand where do we need to raise the bar to be able to take care of future capital investments in the stormwater program itself. Where does that fee need to go? In order to do that, we need to know what's out there. We need to know what we need to be taking care of or should be taking care of as part of that mandate. Other ways in which we've tried to afford the proposed budget priorities is through moderate fee adjustments, and we were a little more, I think, moderate with, if you look in the user fee schedule, for some inspections fees, and it's been a few years that we've had that. So we've had a conversation internally about, is it comparative? Is it within market? Is it still appropriate? And yes, it's just, it's been a little while since we raised those, but that one probably is one we see some adjustment. And then there's a few in planning. We have not included a proposal to include the solid waste fee. Now, we did talk about this, that this was going to be something to consider, again, on the horizon. We planted the seeds about different types of models for solid waste, and the one that staff would potentially recommend the most, but we said it was going to be a work plan item in fiscal year '22 so that it could be brought online with the budget for fiscal year '23. So this budget doesn't include the proposal of a solid waste fee, so I just wanted to make that clear. Something to mention about the overall playbook with our user fees did change a little bit as we gained experience in watching and observing the historic actuals that were coming in in comparison to those that were impacted last year, and assessing where they could go in a recovering economy. We did take a slightly more aggressive approach in revenues where we could, but a conservative approach where was appropriate. So in development fees, we got a little bit more aggressive because development just kept going. And Morrisville has always used a pretty strong conservative approach with development fees for the sake that we have other fees that might need to be offset by better performance in those development fees as the year ends. So we took a little more aggressive approach because obviously, there is interest in continuing develop in in Morrisville. It's, our location is just an attraction factor, as we saw tonight with a major corporate client wanting to make its home here. So those are good things, good things for a tax base. Where we took some conservative routes were those where we still need to gain some experience with MEFC as an expanded program, expanded capacity to offer additional programming. We haven't had a full year of experience that wasn't COVID-impacted. So we did So, so we did, we did escalate them for the sake of the, the fact that the facility has expanded, but we were conservative still in our approach. What did we need to get out of the resources there as opposed to what we may think we could, could receive? Because there's not, there's not really anything to compare it to other than what it was before it expanded. And that created a little more caution in trying to move that bar. So we need to gain some experience in what the, the revenues would look like, how we can market that facility and really energize that revenue source. Another example would be utility sales tax fees. They tend to run the line of, of right at 2% in some years, depending on what the constraints are in the, in the world of consumerism and, and the development, the addition of households, sometimes they drop a little bit below 2%. So I've, again, didn't take an aggressive approach there. I just left that, which is one, probably your third largest resource, really at that flat rate level. I was very conservative. Again, you do these strategies of what you can be aggressive with and what you need to be conservative with on purpose so that you end the year in the right way with your revenues exceeding your expenditures. So having these multiple, multifaceted strategies, depending on the source and the, the makeup of the source and what really drives it, and understanding that really helps you set that bar correctly so, so that you safeguard your future. The other thing we were aggressive with is that we effectively proposed to leverage a portion of the stimulus resource. Getting in front of this is, I think, a critical strategy, not only to, to reimburse a portion of your lost revenues, but really start to set that foundation of how you can effectively use the rest of the resource that's expected to come in, out of that total $8 million. So, so our first distribution is about 4.2 million we're proposing, only to, to leverage half of it right now. A million of it was for the revenue reimbursement from, from lost resources. And the other portion is to put structure in place, to really establish a plan and to understand what we are eligible to use it for. There's no such thing as free, free money. We have to be responsible and accountable to what we do with that money and we have to track it. I actually did receive some information today that said, you really need to establish a separate fund. Morsel's way ahead of the game on that. We've already decided to do that. Establish a separate fund helps you track and, and separate it so it doesn't get commingled with other things. But it is a strategic opportunity to get some of those project initiatives, those budget initiatives accomplished in one-time use. That was pretty, pretty important, I think, this year to move us forward. So we've talked a little bit about previously highlighted base budget is growing. As you can see here on the chart, year over year, we are adding routine cost. So base budget is essentially what you need that's considered routine, that you would have to have the same need next year to keep the same level of services going, with the exception of maybe some acceptable inflation growth. Obviously, it takes more to do business next year as opposed to it does this year. So we do account for that. But as you grow your base budget, which is why in your budget priorities, we separate out, so you can see what's contributing, what are the contributing factors to how a base budget grows? What are those new recurring costs on purpose, intentionally? So that you can know what is, is causing the 9.5%. And do you value that? Does, what does that get you in the community in terms of the, this operating budget? Do you get that return for that investment adding and growing your base budget? So our base budget currently is 30, at the beginning of this proposal, was 34.8. The budget's proposing to add that 79% equates, I should put the dollar amount there, $3.3 million, as we've indicated in your budget priorities books. That's a new reoccurring cost. 2.5 of that is associated to workforce or care of your existing workforce. New workforce plus care of existing workforce. The remaining 800,000 relates to really material inflation items. So you heard me talk about bringing on new facilities. So some big chunks of that were called out specifically because M A F C utilities grew exponentially as a result of the expansion of the facility. We need to account for that. But in order to, to help you understand how a budget changes year over year, the base budget changes, we call out those material inflationary factors that are above and beyond the norm. And then, of course, new, other new programs such as smart cities and sustainability programs. So there's another 3.3 that's really associated with that one-time budget cost. I'm sorry, the 3.3 for recurring was the 7%. The 8% is the next 3.3 plus something for one-time budget items. That's that discretionary spending, those, those one-time things that occur. They tend to be capital outlay driven. They tend to be consulting contracts like the affordable housing. That's only going to last a short period of time. It's not something that's going to recur year over year over year. So that's an example of, of one-time cost. The other dollars that are associated here really represent you putting aside money for the future. Largely, that's your transportation capital reserve, that's you setting aside monies for your fire apparatus. And if we had new debt, that would show here as well as transportation and, and debt. So the base budget's increased by 9.5%. A question for you is, is that meaningful? Does that align to your interest? That's something that you as individuals have to answer and you as an entity have to decide. Does the budget align strategically to the goals and interests of the communities you've outlined in ConnectMorsel? Your new base budget is estimated around 38.1 million. Again, we propose no tax rate increase, but we took a more aggressive combination, aggressive and conservative approach with, with revenues and strategically leveraged other opportunities that have come through the stimulus resource, as well as leverage our own reserves to get things done and aligned to that strategic plan. We use a number of different, at least I use a number of different analytical approaches. And I know Martha uses her measure of analytical approaches to really evaluate how's our, how's our growth, our, our sustainability for the future. You can look at your operational budgets. You can look at your budgets less transfers. I'd say over the years, assessing what you have to have, which is reoccurring costs, that you have to keep in play to keep the same level of services the best, an analytical approach to, to help you understand what's left in capacity to get you the other things that you need to move the bar and to align to those strategic goals and interests, to meet the growing services and demands that this community is expecting. We have a growing population. It's sustaining, the population growth is sustaining at 3%. Hopefully, when our census numbers come in, we'll get a nice little jump that'll help us in sales tax, hopefully. But those are the things that we have to take into account, what the expectations from the community are, how is it growing and changing, and, and what service programmatic needs do we put, need to put in play in our operations.
So I'm going to jump in. One of the, one of the things that we're also working on providing you, it really wasn't asked, but I think it's important, especially to this slide, is what you don't see here is some of the underlying rationale or things that got put into these various years that caused growth in budget and where they were, what, what has led to that growth? Where do you see, what value has been provided to the community in those past years as well? So just a quick example is in fiscal year 21, which was this current year, 7%, but we remember, we were very conservative in what we put into our budget, but a significant portion of that was the recurring smart shuttle. So you don't know that from looking at this chart. So, so it's those things that we're pulling out so that you have that information. The investments you made years ago, some of that is debt service where we've, we've returned for some of the investments that we've made. We're just pulling some of that out so you've got a context, because if you look at it averaged over time, it's not as profound as what it may look like on this slide. So we're, we're providing that information for you to look at.
So that'd be great context to really put meaning to what those percentages really represent to you in terms of what it provides back in the community. Some important observations when we look at a base budget and we look forward to sustainability, and we'll get to fund balance in a minute, is, is really that, as I mentioned, that influence of growth. Something to consider is looking ahead at some of the decisions that have been made that put McCrimmon Parkway in place. And what that did is that created the potential future economic engine that is going to affect your tax base, that affects your largest revenue income source, as well as sales tax, many other things that come into play as it develops. But as I look ahead, you know, at, at opportunities that exist, Morsel still has potential and, and revenue growth that you can sustain, that natural revenue growth year over year pretty well, because we've always talked about build out, build out, build out. You have engines that are in place. McCrimmon Parkway is one of them. Your town center is going to be the next one. Your TOD is right, going to be behind that as well. Those are all drivers of your future and what we can do operationally and, and capital-wise. The other thing, as we talked about conversely, is that when you expand a computer, community, you expand need, you expand services. So what's other, that's the other side of the coin that we have to evaluate as we move forward, is, as while it might be a revenue engine, it's also going to impact really the types of services we need to be offering. All right. So let's talk a little bit about fund balance. Fund balance is our primary reserve or what I would call our savings account. That's those liquid dollars. Those are the things that, that are not restricted. They're not committed by you. They are not in play for something else, promised or moved over to another fund. Fund balance is significantly important to our local governments, not just Morsel, it's just local government in, in general, as cash flow needs. So as many of you know, our revenues, they don't, our big revenue sources don't materialize in the first and second quarter. They really materialize at the last part of the second quarter and primarily the first part of the third quarter. So all of our expenses sort of start, you, you give folks the green light with a budget adoption July 1, everybody's ready to rock and roll and start putting execution of projects and taking care of business in play. So we have to have the ability to cash flow. So a good portion of your fund balance in the beginning of fiscal year is really drawn for that. And then the remainder of that can be used in different ways as you choose to. And as we're using here, we're proposing actually to utilize it to balance the budget for those one-time items that we can call out in the budget. So as you see here, in fiscal year 22, we're proposing to use 6%. Typically, we're usually around that 3% to 4% mark. This year, we've been a little more aggressive to try to align to what we think council's interests are as we are guided by your strategic plan. So the fund balance, it's typically measured at year end and it's calculated within that year's expenditures. So we'll know at the end of June 30th, really what that number's going to look like. And, and from there, depending on how it falls into your, your policy, between 25 and 45%, that's really your target range, and, and we'll know that at the end of the, the audit. Council can decide to potentially do something with those extra dollars that are above 45% or if you choose to do something different. So fund balance in and of itself, it can be a very comprehensive calculation. There's a lot of factors that come into play with, with fund balance. And many of it, if you just, if you consider a bucket of money and you call out everything that's been committed, restricted, or has been assigned legally, the definition of assigned, what's left is really your liquid cash. So that's why I refer to it as a savings account. And that's what you have to leverage for cash flow. You have to leverage for capital projects and other one-time items, or to handle unforeseen issues. And fortunately, Morsel did not have to draw too much on to our unassigned fund balance this year for COVID expenses. We, we tried to absorb as much as we could. So again, our policy's between 25 and 45% of that year's expenditures. So that percentage sort of can move depending on how much you spend or measured as, as spent that year. So we plan to use the 6%. We're still safeguarding the remaining balance of, of, remember, I believe it was at 36, 36.9% at the end of 20. We're still planning to preserve the remaining balance for those cash flow needs, for the unassigned items and any other draws on, on fund balance that council chooses to leverage as we move forward. And you can do that at any point. Council, with this budget, you could elect, if you choose to, to not leverage as much to balance the budget. Well, what's the impact? Well, the impact is you're reducing something somewhere. I think we have maxed our revenue resources. Usually, I could say I might be able to play and push a, a number with sales tax, be a little more aggressive. We've already done that in the presentation of this budget and putting it together. So what I would say is it ends up that you have to trade off some other, other item if you were to reduce the use of fund balance. Staff does not take the use of fund balance lightly. We effectively assess our performance and, and we monitor trends, our actual trends year over year as compared to our budget, to, to really understand what we utilize, what we carry over, so that we understand if 6%, you know, how high risk is that for us? So, so we would not bring you something we did not feel comfortable or confident in terms of what we know today. Now, all things can change tomorrow, as we've known with COVID and other recessions, but based on the information we have today, we feel confident about the 6% and being able to leverage that. Internally, we do really what I would call an evaluation of long-range forecasting. And in that analysis, we, we, and I've done it in a number of different ways. I think this one lines best with that base budget philosophy. So it's important to look long-term to make sure that you can sustain where we're putting in play and reoccurring expenses, as well as to be able to have something in the future to work with. And, and, and we hold that sales tax 36 cent across. We, we hold what is a base budget in play now and carry, what I call, shadow it forward and use modifiers of growth in both your natural revenue resources and your base budget, and really project forward to, to see how full is the glass and what's remaining available that we can leverage for those future discretionary items or expansion of, of your operations. And one of the, the indicators of the results of that really comes through fund balance. So a lot of numbers are behind this projection here. It all start with that long-range forecasting model and that assumption of revenues and expenditures over a five-year period to really lead you to where does it take fund balance in the future? And we've talked about the bar's getting closer. As we add additional reoccurring cost, the bar between natural growth and revenues and the growth in your base budget expenditures is getting closer and closer. We can see that in a couple of ways. I can see that through expenditures per capita versus expenditures per revenue. And you can see the, over the years since, gosh, before 2017, the line's getting closer and closer. And what does that mean? It means we're putting money in play to deliver quality services and, and really address those emerging interests that we have from a very dynamic community, that it has high expectations, an organization that has high expectations, I believe. As a result, what we see here as we get bars closer and closer is what available capacity potentially could have exist in the future in that base budget assessment. And in our projections, now again, you don't want to get overly prescriptive here, but it is, it does identify maybe challenges and opportunities of where you could have the available capacity and where you might need to strategize and put other things in play. And in here in 2023 and 24, it certainly indicates through that long-range projection that you are going to need tax increment to pay for future debt, to, to take care of that element. It does bring the bar closer. But something I did fold into this, this long-range projection was the ability that every four years now, we do a revaluation. years now, we do a revaluation. And a revaluation of property taxes resets the bar of what your biggest revenue source provides you. And I just took, went ahead and took that assumption forward, and there are opportunities that can be folded in into the future that create additional capacity. Might be a couple of years where we need to really think about and plan and strategize. But again, tomorrow can change. Our opportunities and influences can be huge factors, and how we perform against a budget can certainly influence this. This type of analysis is really looking ahead at worst case if we were to budget and execute at 100% as we look forward to those future forecasts. But it certainly gives us a vantage point of where do we have opportunities and potential in the future? And where do we need to be thinking a little bit harder and strategizing and putting other things in play? And that's why I mentioned your revenue engine, your economic engine with the decisions that you've made for critical development areas is going to be a part of this picture in the future. And it's going to change how the future might look.
Jeanie, how long do you think you need for?
I'm almost done. This one?
Yeah.
No, I'm almost done. So other resources available, these are the things that you've committed that are dedicated for future capital-type elements or for future debt. Several of the reserve funds specifically call out for debt. These reserves will become an important element in your realization of your future CIP and your bonds. So here, I'm going to pause and see if there's any questions as it relates to the facts and figures and how we're going to pay for something. So I think I have. Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson, if you're okay?
Yes. This specific slide I was very curious about. I do appreciate having the transparency of seeing the roadway transportation, how much is programmed versus undesignated, and the parks payment lieu is all undesignated, which I'm kind of confused because we do have a lot of potential projects, like the nature park and some other items. So is the parkland payment lieu funded by third parties, meaning developments that are contributing, you know, developers to this? The town never designates money of their own into this. It's purely a funded capital area by third parties?
Through the development fees, the choice of the developer to do parkland payment lieu instead of the dedication of space. That's how it's grown. And because of the calculation of the fee, it can be pretty exponential, and I believe what you're seeing here is results of much of what's being paid through from apartment complexes as a result of us adjusting how it applies to this.
Right. So just wanted to share some of my thoughts about this. It looks great to see it. I'm not sure if it's all undesignated in my mind, because I have like lots of things that we could do with it. But my concern is as we near build out, how are we planning for the future? And how are we making sure that we have money for future capital projects for parks? Because I think we're going to exhaust this pretty quickly. We have a lot of things that we could be spending. And several years ago, councilmember Schlink wanted to dedicate some money to a capital reserve that I believe it's your transportation capital reserve, so we'd always have some money for the transportation area. If this is only funded by a third party, maybe we should consider our future and have a similar fund. So I'm just going to put it out there to the council to consider as well. But I just want to see us really showing to the people that we're investing in the future with, you know, the town money, the tax money, the people are also contributing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Just to follow up on something is that we have actually utilized this resource throughout the years, and the CAFR, it's reported separately, and you can see how we transferred it out to other capital projects. Currently, the estimate is reaching $4 million now. I believe we had anticipated to potentially leverage it in combination with some bonds. So it's there, and it's going to be used potentially for items that we show on your CIP, and we'll make a connection with that in a little bit.
Yes. I just know we have this huge gap, and I'm just trying to see ways of helping. The bond is going to help, this is going to help, but we still have even more need than money, so.
And?
I understand what you're asking for, councilmember Scruggins-Johnson. She wants, she's talking about an allocation of town resources similar to roadway towards parks and recreation.
Were considerations.
No, I wrote that down. I was just adding commentary to how it connects to the CIP.
Great. Thank you.
But councilmember Schlink previously was correct, the source is changing as a result of how development's changing and how you change in effect, how the fee comes about through the UDO. Other questions?
Councilmember Garamello, please, followed by councilmember Rowe.
Yes, so I'll just circle back. I think that's an excellent idea because, yes, last meeting, we were struggling to figure out, even though we are allocating $17.5 million for the parkland, for the open space and the land development for parks, there's still a lot of things that can be done. So, you know, I think this is the right time to start investing, like even simple things that we can do, like you added in special needs in a park. So that's the money, you know, like, so even enhancements, this money can slowly grow over a period of time. And you want to have additional additions or other parks, you know, that can be done, but it has to be dedicated to parks and not a common fund, because I don't want this money getting utilized for other needs. But it is purely for, you know, under the same thing that we use for PIL, kind of, parkland.
You're talking about a future capital reserve potential to replace what is potentially diminishing?
Yes, absolutely. And then the other questions, I had a lot of questions because of the previous slides. So one of the slides where you're saying the 7% recurring, we're, the thing that bothers me is like we are adding 7%, but our growth for the town is only at projected 3%, right? So means the revenues of how you are padding for future. So pretty much you have a delta of 4%? Is that my understanding correctly?
I'm having a hard time hearing you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
The echo is not working.
Okay, my bad. I'm not used to myself here. So what I'm trying to see is one of the slides where you said that we are increasing 7% reoccurring costs.
Okay.
Okay. So, and I know previously you have said to us that the way you calculate your budget is a 3% growth, right, every year to the base budget that you're doing? So pretty much we are incurring a 7% debt, a 4%, like in a 7 minus 3 is 4 every time to accommodate the additional needs, right? Is that how I take it, like, you know, that because the recurring cost is not able to sustain from the growth of what our town is padding up?
Currently, your revenues are above your base expenditures. So if your revenues are going 3% to 4%, which they are, your natural growth, and we market out or project out base budget expenditures to at least grow by 3%, where does that carry us in the future? Well, it does carry us closer and closer together. So right now, based on what you've added in '21, yes, 7% is increasing that bottom line for your expenditures and is getting closer to how your revenue grows. Now, your revenue can be impacted by those things like revaluation, or really sort of resets the bar, that can impact as you are adding new developments can also impact your sales tax. And sales tax, by the way, as other developing communities in Wake County grow, it also affects how sales tax can grow. So in some cases, in some years, your revenue, natural growth in revenues can peak, and now everything's starting to move up.
Yeah, I totally get it. But like, my only concern is are we able to sustain at the 7% recurring, you know?
And if I, that's why I'd like you to see that bigger-picture base budget rather than these individual years, so that you see what's happening.
Yeah, like you gave an example of.
Yeah, I think that'll help this conversation.
And then just as an FAQ, like, you know, I know we do trucks and, you know, fire trucks and police vehicles. Do we have a policy on what is for rolling over or buying new fire, you know, fire trucks or, you know, rolling out the existing car fleet that we have? Because I see, like, not in this budget, but previous budgets, I've seen a lot of money getting put for rolling the fleet and having new fleet.
So fire appers, we tend to purchase new, that's what I'm hearing you say. I can work on an FAQ that can speak to both the fire apparatus and really the policy development that we're working on with vehicle replacements, as those are big sources of expenses year over year.
And what is the criteria for it, right? Like, because?
And we mentioned that we do have a policy, we're refining the policy to incorporate additional factors.
Yeah, so that it's easy for us to also understand, you know, what's the criteria? Is it matching the criteria to do it?
Right.
Okay. And then the other is the MAFC operating costs, like you said, it has gone significantly higher. So how do we, because I've not seen like any particular, especially MAFC post-COVID and pre-COVID, how, you know, after we have inaugurated it, from the previous MAFC that we had, how much is that operating increase? Because I see like you have increased the fees for the services, so just wanted to see, are we sufficient? Are we able to sustain? Or what's the hit that we're taking in the delta?
So pre-COVID as compared to where we're projecting today? Is that what I hear you say? And what's changed in operating?
Because we inaugurated during the COVID time, right, the MAFC. So I know like membership is down and all those things, but operating costs pretty much remain the same, right? You know, so wanted to understand how that quantifies, you know, are we able to sustain from the fees and membership? Obviously not. So what is the delta that is, you know, that we are absorbing the cost every year on it?
So MAFC is not self-sustained, or, you know, parks and recs generally is not self-sustained from its fees.
I totally get it.
It's subsidized through the general.
Absolutely. And then the lab salaries, right, for this year? Like, I've not seen anything talk about that, if I can get FAQs on that.
So we always run an analysis on that, so we can work that into the FAQ as well, and the MAFC operational changes, pre-COVID to now. Back on sustainability, just want to make sure you understand, when I show you a projection of fund balance, what's behind it is long-range planning to get to what is sustainable, is to hold the line of where we're at today and escalated by some growth factor, both revenues and expenditures. It suggests there is sustainability. When I show you this picture, that's the result or an indicator in this case of future sustainability. And I have taken it a step further by showing that you have potential growth in your revenue sources that creates capacity and the future through revaluation potentially.
Yeah. And then the other thing I wanted was the 6%, you're right, use of FY22, right? That is pretty much $3.3 million that I'm thinking as a one-time expense?
No.
No? So that's a different expense, like?
It's part of how we choose to pay for it, but it's not all of that $3.3 million.
Okay. So if I can understand that, how it is used, and then for my thing, so because I'm trying to quantify why are we using 6% out of it? What is going?
So, so if, let me, I think it's important, you don't use 6%. This is a balancing mechanism so that if our revenues came in at exactly what we projected and we spent everything in our budget, then you would have to use that.
Right.
We know, we've been very fortunate that we have typically gotten more revenue, we have, we don't spend all of our budget. You've mentioned an example, lab salaries. All of that falls back into your savings account, which then results, you do not use this fund balance. It's a met, and so I think it is important to recognize, it's a tool, it's not what we will use. We could show you the history, there have been many years that you have to balance a whole worst-case scenario, but that's not what happens in reality of executing a budget.
I think I know of two years which we actually utilized in appropriation of fund balance in the end of the fiscal year. And so that's that understanding of historic actuals that's critically important. When we decide a 6% of the bar, a measurable risk that we think is attainable, that we aren't going to use it by the end of that fiscal year, because we know we're budgeting at 100%, but we know our execution tends not to be all of 100%. And revenues, we budget conservatively, we are very keenly aware of the sources and what drives them on purpose, so we budget them appropriately and set in infused strategies in our revenue sources to really hold that line so that revenues are going to exceed, hopefully, our projections. And with that creates that delta and that expanse that will allow us potentially not to have to use it by the end of that fiscal year.
Okay. Those are my questions.
And I think we, I think we can put something in FAQs that helps everybody see that, I'll say, transition between a budget and the actual results. That'll help.
Now, I say that in the best of times, and, you know, it'll be one year where it all proves me wrong, but that's, it is what it is. But that's a strategy, and as Martha mentioned, it's a tool that we have leveraged several times in the past.
So, Mayor, I know that you sort of asked for a break about 30 minutes, and we're well over that. Do you want to take a break before we entertain additional questions?
I believe so. If that's okay. It'll be councilmember Rowe followed by mayor Protam when we come back. Does that sound okay to everybody?
And are we ready to move to CIP? Are we going to have a few more questions?
I think we're still on these slides.
Okay, all right.
At this point, okay? So it's nine o'clock right now. Let's please reconvene at 9:11. Thank you very much. 9:11, we're coming back into session. We're in the question period, question and answer right now. I'll recognize councilmember Rowe. Does staff have anything in between before we start questions again?
No, I think we're good to go. Additional questions on this? I think I saw mayor Protam, but did I miss someone over here that had a question?
Yeah, it was councilmember Rowe first, and then mayor Protam, followed by myself.
So just a thought, to follow up on what councilmember Scruggins-Johnson had brought up, is that, you know, when you look at third parties and, you know, we get the projects that come in on transportation payment lieu, parkland payment lieu, but if you take a step back, I think part of the problem, we're hearing from our residents, real concerns about inadequate investment in our infrastructure, you know, roads, schools. And so I think the challenge that we face is how do we accelerate the amount of money coming from the state? I mean, even though all these things that we do, serving on Campo and everything, I mean, we've had a lot of money come in for our state roads, but we're just now seeing some of them begin, it's just not happening fast enough. And so I think we have to get creative in terms of, you know, what are the different options? I've been researching recently, like, different things other towns do around the country, like local option fuel taxes. We don't really have some of that flexibility, where you, you know, tax gasoline for people coming in and out of the town. Or we have the vehicle tags that the legislature approved, you know, for the revenue, right? And so I think, like, one thing, and I'm just sharing thoughts, you know, with the recent announcement of Apple, there was talk about $100 million going into transportation, $112 million going into schools. And some of those monies are going into rural areas, but I would argue that we need to be a part of those conversations earlier on with the Economic Development Agency so that, you know, because Apple's going to be close to Morristown, and those 3,000 people are going to be right here. And so maybe that's something that's happening, but I just don't know what could be done. And then, and the final thing is, so maybe- so maybe we work regionally with Cary and other local jurisdictions to make sure that we're teaming so that when Apple does come here, how are we getting larger amounts of funding coming into Morrisville or whatever? Because they're going to live in Morrisville, they're going to work not really in Morrisville, but most of them are because it's so close, right? And the final thing is, I've heard Tom Murray, when he was in legislature, even when he was on the council, talk about infrastructure banks, you know? And I don't know whether those were ideas about the state having sort of an infrastructure bank that they would create, like a revolving loan of capital that can be provided to cities, but I don't know enough about it. I just wanted to go, the point I'm trying to make is that I think Councilmember Scroggins Johnson hit it on the nail. I mean, the third party thing is good, but it's not enough money coming in fast enough. And so, you know, the one percent slink transportation tax that we implemented, it generated significant amount of revenue. So do we want to allocate, you know, you know, how much of our property tax rate can we absorb to meet even our transportation needs when, you know, our budget relatively, you know, N C fifty four, just that one small strip of seventy million and our budget's forty two million? And some residents are like, well, why don't you just go fix fifty four? You know, there's only so much that we can spend on transportation ourselves. So it's just some long term policy things to think about because the money's not coming in fast enough. And the sources that it's coming from, the revenues are depleting from the state. That's something from a policy perspective that we need to deal with.
And I agree, it's a policy perspective. You're leveraging what you have the authority in terms of fees now. So you have to attack it by getting in the right channels of conversation. And I think Morrisville does actually a phenomenal job of getting in the right conversations to really get those lap funding and get in, get in funding through North Carolina Department of Transportation. You have to get in the right lanes. The council has to approach it from a policy perspective. Is there other legislation that we, special legislation that we can get tapped into? Not going to solve today because it's like special legislation, as you know, with the MSD, for example, it took several years to really put that program in play and a will of the people on that particular one because it required a petition. But there's things that council as a collective entity can do. And then there's things that staff is doing and, and council, you are a part of committees on purpose to get in those right conversations. And we just need to keep up. Are we still in the right conversations, in the right channels when new things like Apple is coming on board? But in terms of what you do have the authority to leverage, you're leveraging those sources. When you, when you put aside allocations of reserves, you have to balance that with how your operating budget is growing each year because you're pulling out new revenues that recur each year and you're putting it over here and holding it idle for a future capital investment. But you have to think conversely, what does that do to your operations and how you can grow and expand it and meet those growing service needs? So you sort of have to make sure you're looking at both sides as well as making sure that you're in the right conversations from council to our community. And Erin, she's, she's listening out for you as well through the legislation avenue to make sure that we're, we're in tune as we should. Other questions? I think, are we over here to Mayor Protan?
Yeah. So just to, to follow up on that, that's a bigger conversation to have, obviously. And, and just to add on to this idea of additional revenue options and opportunities, I've been a huge proponent of the toolbox of revenue options that should be available to municipalities across the state. And one of those being the hotel motel tax. Hotel motel, hotel motel tax for the town of Morrisville, it's hard to talk with a mask sometimes, would be incredibly advantageous. And I think that would, if you remember when the, the bill was out there, which is kind of just laying there, probably in a committee now dying, but there was a bill out there that would allow for hotel melto tax monies to be used for transportation projects because hotels bring in traffic congestion and the idea was to maybe designate it for those kinds of uses or for tourism uses. So anyhow, that, you know, that's not, that's not part of this year's budget and that's not something we're going to solve tonight, but worthy of discussion later on. I think our, our elected official, state elected officials know how we feel about that because we talk about it often with them. So anyhow, all right, Jeannie, so get back to tonight's reason where you are and this year, this budget that we're going to adopt. My question relates to the slide you have on the operating based budget development was the same slide that Councilmember Garamello was on and he was asking his questions. And so I like this slide. I like where you, you show the seven percent, the eight percent and the six percent. So just so I understand, to those, those three buckets on the end, do they relate to pages seventy two through thirty eight where we have operating impacts, routine and reoccurring annually, one time operating or capital impacts, and then the last is transfer and capital reserves? Can I, do those equate?
So where I drew those specifically was really through your budget priority summary. They are, they are captured and laid out just as I have layered on those types of expenses by starting with the base budget first. So if you go on page twenty seven
Yep.
Through.
Thirty eight.
Thirty eight, is it?
Yeah.
Thirty eight. Each one of those buckets, if you start on page twenty seven, it starts with operating impacts, routine and reoccurring annual costs. The total is over here at three point three million. So that's what's creating those bars and that's, that's what it aligns to.
I just wanted to clarify that because that's how I was kind, they're labeled a little differently. So that's why I wanted to make sure.
Probably because I was trying to fit them all in.
I know. That's fine. That's fine. I wanted to make sure that when I go back and look at these that I'm confident in what I'm interpreting. So the six percent transfers are those transfers that go into the capital reserve funds that we've set up, the fire apparatus, roadway?
Yes.
Got it. Okay, good. And then I do like this chart very much, but you did, you all did say you're going to bring out back information on the nine point five percent.
Actually, all of the years, it'll be good comparison.
Good.
To see how things added over time and where.
Good.
And why.
Okay. Okay, that's perfect. Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Other questions before we move to the next group?
Yeah, I had a comment first and a couple of questions. I do like the idea of using the N C L M toolbox of all their suggested different funding sources. We've been working on that for years. They pared it down to just one and it's still not moving anywhere. We're having excess revenues from N C D O T or something. So we are always working on those in the background, but we can't count on those. The levers that we do have are the ones that we can do something with. I really like the idea of dedicating some new revenue to parkland payment and lieu like we've done for roadways in the past. I think that's going to be important. I don't necessarily.
Referring to the allocation there? Is that what you're talking about?
I'm sorry.
The annual allocation to.
Yeah.
Okay.
If I recall, when we did it originally, it was new revenue. It wasn't being absorbed in current property tax rate. We actually added a cent then in order to make that happen.
For the transportation.
Right.
We added a half a cent.
Right.
But allocated a cent.
And it's not an allocation so much as it is the equivalent of a penny.
It's not dedicated.
It's not a dedicated. So let's make sure we're clear on that. Council can choose to change that, but you do limit your future flexibility and when you can draw on it and maybe not decide to send it out in a year that you're having a difficult economic crisis that you're working. So just keep that in mind.
And I believe that was in a revenue neutral year, was it?
Yes.
Right. So to that end, I think with emerging interests from the residents, we don't have the capacity to meet their expectations yet. So if there's a way to get there, I think this council can try to be creative and try to get there and figure out a way to get to some of their emerging needs. I want to go to the fund balance slide. If you could bring me there. I just want to ask a couple of questions about the assumptions there. So for when it goes up in twenty twenty five, the future forecast, is that because the revale year, you're assuming that the tax rate will stay at thirty nine?
Right. You're, you're taking advantage of the fact that the market's moving the value of that steady tax base.
So I'd be interested in seeing what that fund balance slide would look like if it stayed revenue neutral. Because other than last year's COVID year, we've generally been revenue neutral or revenue negative. So I want to be realistic about future councils and what they might do because the past is probably the best indicator of what the future will do. So that, that's a concern there. I'd also be interested in knowing, in the past, when we've allocated three percent in a budget for fund balance, was that at the beginning and then we ended up using zero? Or did we start off with a six percent right off the bat to balance the budget as a tool?
So in previous years, how we balanced the budget. So I always use what I think's reasonable numbers to work with. Three percent in the past has always been relatively about seven hundred to nine hundred, depending on that, that amount that you're budgeting each year in expenditures. It's, it's an amount that tends to be recoverable based on the type of revenue conservatism that we apply each of those years or where we think new growth's going to occur. So that's where the three percent came from. It's just from our experience. It's, it's a three percent margin of difference that we can afford to use in balancing a budget. I'm applying the same rule this year based on our experience and how we perform using historic actuals and expenditures to what we collect in revenues that that margin of difference, we can go as high as six percent in, in using and leveraging fund balance and still potentially at the end of the year, based on our historic performance, potentially not have to utilize that six percent. And that's, again, I say that, but all things can change tomorrow. But based on what our historic trends are and our patterns, that's just where we led that.
Okay. So ideally, we won't have to use it. But what can we do as a council in a town to build that capacity to meet the needs? For example, the town center, even the least R F P was five million dollars for our net for public investment.
Build in your reserves?
Yeah. How can, where will that five million dollars come from? Because it's not in any of our stuff now.
In the future.
Yeah.
For, for future things.
In the next year or two, for this phase that we're R F Ping now, where can that five million dollars come from? Because right now I don't see it in this budget or any way to get to it in a reasonable way because we're using up all our debt and this is not reflected there. So that's just a question. If we want to move forward with the R F P, we have to be in a position to actually have the money to execute it.
For the R F P for town center?
Yes.
So in your capacity model, and I can speak to this in the FAQ a little more clearly so that you have some information, it did allow for capacity indicator of fifty six million. You're leveraging thirty seven million of that for bonds. Bonds did not include town center, but in your whole capacity, it did account for some monies for facilities or town center in the future out years. Now, the out years meaning in the model was twenty twenty six. And I, I can sort of spell some of that out a little more simply because I know you don't have the model sitting in front of you to recollect. So you're speaking specifically to capital items with town center. So the ways in which you can pay for that is to assure that you have that capacity. And as we indicated in talking with our financial advisors, is that we're going to monitor that every year. And the model is conserve, very conservative on purpose. I mean, the interest rate in the model estimates four point five percent. Today's interest rates are around two to three percent. So there in of itself, the model is going to say you have potential, provided things stay as they are now, what we know today, for capacity in the future. As we adjust and mature the model and gain new information at the close of each fiscal year through our CAFRA, you as council have the ability to raise revenues. As long as you are working with your debt affordability and capacity model that we're going to assess each year, you have the ability to raise revenues. You have the ability to utilize reserves as they exist today and as you put aside today for the future that can help you potentially walk down that path towards getting and funding potential projects for town center. The question is how much that you can be ready for. You also have another potential instrument to you. The town center is going to bring in new tax base. And in that area, you could potentially leverage a type of district and you could utilize those new revenues coming in in this area to repay debt. It's a type of debt instrument that you could potentially utilize in this particular area. And it was something that I talked about with school government. But again, you still have to be able to make sure that you have the debt affordability capacity according to your policies. Again, remember, you control that policy. But you also want to be reasonable and comparative as the financial advisors indicated and where you benchmark in comparison when you're going up and talking with credit rating agencies to make sure that you can get the best interest rate, no matter the debt financing instrument, that you could get the best interest rate, no matter the, the way that you approach it, that you're falling within that benchmark and comparative analysis of other municipalities, meaning that you're not exceeding your policy intentionally and, and overextending yourself. So you do have to be mindful of those three major indicators, which is your debt ratio, your assessed value and your payout ratio. So those three work together and not any one is the one you look at. But you have the ability. It's just how much are we talking about? And working with through the R F P process is going to help us know what projects are going to be included potentially or through working with a public private partnership through the M O U and deciding what is it going to look like. Then we can sort of get an idea of what's the future's going to hold in projects that we're going to be responsible for paying for. And then we can align resources and/or strategies and, and financing instruments that work appropriately to get you there. Now, the bar, as I said, gets reassessed every year and every year council has the authority to leverage and raise revenues, to leverage reserves and resources and to leverage debt to pay for those kinds of things.
Right. So right, we're, the plan is right now to be right on the cutting edge and actually exceed one of those ratios. So I'm just trying to.
One ratio doesn't work alone, but.
Right. And we're willing to, to do that because we're looking at the long term goals. But I just want to put us in a position where if we are going to ever widen fifty four, for example, maybe a seventy million dollar road and we get a thirty percent match, that's twenty one million dollars. So how can we start saving for that now? How can we start stocking money away for something like that for the town green, for a community center and our town center? These are things that we've been talking about and there's expectation set. And we have a good C I P policy and the bonds that are going to address some of our needs, but we have more, more emerging needs from our residents. So how can we put ourselves in a position where we're not running so lean that we don't have the capacity to take advantage when opportunities come before us? So that's just what I'm hoping that we all start thinking about. Councilmember Scroggins Johnson already is thinking about it. We, we have more needs in our parks than the four million is going to meet, especially if we're going to try to leverage some of that money for Crabtree Nature Park, for example.
And I think those are the policy conversations you as council have to have for today and tomorrow and to the future.
We've got just a few weeks.
Is one budget going to solve that for you? No, but staff has, has outlined ways in which we could potentially do that if you tell us what your expectations and policies are, that we can align the tools and the resources appropriately to get you there or tell you where the hurdles and the challenges are and, and propose things that you have to rethink.
So one thing I would ask the council to think about is how can we get back up to the forty five percent fund balance where we were a couple of years ago? Because right now, we keep on decrementing it and cutting it leaner. And as was noted, if we're seven percent growth in base budget every year and we're only growing by three percent, we're really getting a lot closer to not ever building more capacity. So the needs keep growing, but our capacity is flat or small, becoming smaller. So we talk about sustainability. How can we sustain this growth? An important thing in the future is to think about not going revenue neutral in order to actually take advantage of that, like you're talking about. But when a push comes to shove, that's just one year's budget discussion. So we have to start looking longer term. And if we're going to use charts like this, it's going to be important to actually stick to the predictions so that we can actually take the benefits. so that we can actually take the benefits and be able to grow our capacity as a town. So that's just big picture with some little details. So I just want the residents to be hearing it. And we just all need to sort of get our minds around if the town's going to keep running lean or if we're going to try to really meet our potential. Thank you for letting me. That took a lot longer than I thought it would, and I apologize. I appreciate everyone's patience.
Other questions before we move? Okay. Good conversation. Just remember, the way you build capacity, another way in which you build capacity is that your revenues are going to exceed your expenditures year over year. That replenishes your fund balance. But as you use it, it can be hard to grow it at a faster rate if you're using it. So let's move on to capital investment because this one is probably the one I'm really excited about, personally excited about. So y'all can't burst my bubble on that one. So what excites me is how the CIP is really shaping up this year. And it's representative of what I think is an actionable plan, meaning that it's aligning to really a lot of things that we hear from the community and things that they want us to provide. And it aligns a funding plan with it. And we've worked with, a couple of years now, with our financial advisors and our bond council to sort of get us here. And our bond referendum strategy is really framing our five-year window here as a recommended draft of our CIP. So the CIP document, I've matured it over time because it is getting to something more than just a piece of paper in a book. It's an actionable plan. It consists of active section of projects that we have aligned funding to, that we've leveraged or already made investments to. And we have intent or commitment to carry them out in the future. It includes future projected concepts, which is on your next slide here. Separates those out. Those are largely items that are considered unfunded. But the critical nature of what a CIP does for you when you're going out to work with a bond referendum and you're issuing debt and you're working with credit rating agencies, it's showing you got a future plan. Things that you have validated that are important because you've prioritized them, you've worked to create project concepts that says, okay, here's my five-year picture of how I'm going to invest in Morrisville's future to give back to the community and create tangible investments. And here's what I'm going to work with going forward after we execute those five years' worth of investment projects. These are things that I can move up. If we can identify additional capacity, if year over year, as we assess our performance, we can glean additional capacity. We can get capacity through our debt obligation, through the ratios performing better. We could potentially move some of those up. Through a credit rating agency, the fact that we have a plan like this that looks at planning for five years of active projects, investments, and stages for those that you want to talk about and plan for the future round of potentially bond items or other installment, it says a lot. It says a lot to your long-range planning capacity and your forward-thinking into the future. So this is really important. So the CIP has been based on really stakeholder input from the community. Over several years, we've collected that information through council's input on several years that we've sort of tapped you and said, what are the projects that you're most interested? What are the priorities? And really staff's, what they're seeing and what they're hearing from the community. Remember, there's other vehicles of community input through master plan development that sort of glean and bring things forward that are important. So the plan really demonstrates really valued community investments over the next five years, but not just on a piece of paper. It's telling you how you're going to fund them. And that's where the magic's going to happen, that we can move the bar. Instead of going out for a bond referendum and waiting seven years to execute and put a project in play, we are ready to move on projects. In fact, Brandon is waiting for the bond referendum to be able to execute projects that we've already invested in. And our CIP is built on that basis to be able to stage for that future interest. So you will notice that there is a capital budget for fiscal year '22 that's largely driven by your bond referendum. So it will not be adopted or implemented, is the better word here, until we know the success of the bond referendum. Staff will bring back the right mechanisms to be able to get and establish those capital projects and appropriate those funds as necessary that align with your projected capital budget. But when you're adopting the CIP with the budget for now, you're adopting the plan, but you're not yet appropriating the dollars. Because the assumption doesn't yet exist for the bond items. You need to have the referendum first.
Are we taking questions yet or waiting until you're done with CIP?
I am. I'm just checking to make sure that I have all of my information out there. So just a reminder that when we look at the cost estimates, remember, these are estimates that as a project materializes, goes through a design process and gets numbers, things can change a little or be more scoped out. So we get better numbers as we move something through a design process. But these are estimates. And in terms of debt, they are based on the 4.5% interest, as we've shown here. And I have made an adjustment or correction. I did not remove this number here in the 2022. So I have an update that's actually already been applied. But this does show your funding plan, and I am available for questions at this point.
Councilmember Fender, please.
I have a couple of clarifications. First, all the amounts in the CIP budget for fiscal year '22, or not the amounts, but the projects, are all of those anticipated to be covered by the bond?
No. So I can probably break out in a chart in the FAQ to sort of spell out which ones are covered by installment, which ones are covered by other reserves, a little bit better than what you have here. This just sort of lumps them together. So I can provide you that level of detail.
Okay. And then my second question, and you alluded to it with the estimates, but my question was specific to the $7 million for NC-54. Where does that come from? And I guess, how good of an estimate is it?
That is a very swag estimate at this point. We have to refine through studies to really align what type of projects could that provide you and create, turn a placeholder into more realistic assumptions.
So let's clarify. That's not an NC-54 project. That's a category that council talked about, about mitigation. And so that would be a series of projects that help with traffic congestion mitigation on NC-54, not anything related to the 70-plus million dollar project that NC-54 is.
Okay. So let me make sure. Are you talking about the 5.5% or are you talking about the 8% here?
I don't know where you are. I was talking about the, yeah, I'm talking about this.
You're talking about this number? Okay.
The $7 million.
That specifically is related to Airport Boulevard.
Okay.
Okay. So as Martha indicated, it's not directly on NC-54, but it is a mitigation-type project that allows, or in the future will allow, some offloading of some congestion. It's just that type of project. I'm sorry, I thought you were referring to this particular one.
Okay, that's all I had.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, you don't have a monitor? We should get you a monitor, too.
I have one. I removed it because I couldn't see gene.
All right, other questions? Councilmember Fender on the CIP? Other questions on the CIP?
I had a quick one about, seemed like you were talking about the bond and how for the CIP, we're not going to execute projects if the bond doesn't pass. But-
I'm sorry. I cannot hear you.
Okay. I might have misheard or misunderstood when you were saying that the CIP isn't really adopted and we're not executing things because the bond might not pass or one of the three bonds might not pass.
So you're adopting the CIP with the budget as a plan. But what you're not doing is appropriating the funding just yet because you have to wait for your bond referendum to go through to make sure that you've got the reasonable expectation that you're going to get and issue bonds.
But if we don't-
If the bonds don't pass, and that's a very low possibility in Morrisville, I would assume, there are other strategies. You as council would have to decide how important those projects still are and remain. And you would just leverage a different type of funding source. So fire station's a perfect example. It's ready to go. It's just waiting on the bond referendum and that you've got the voters' approval to execute using geo-bonds as the debt instrument. If it did not pass, you as council can still decide to leverage installment financing because you have collateral in that particular source to leverage. So that would be what staff would have to work if that was council's will.
Okay, yep.
And if the bond did not pass in that particular question.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear to anyone watching that these are important projects. And the council might go ahead and just do installment financing, which would cost just a little bit more.
We did put that in all the materials in, as far as a bond process. If they didn't pass, what could council do? And again, it's council's will at that point. If it didn't go through, how are you going to direct that policy for staff to be able to execute? And does the project continue through a different funding source?
Okay. I also wanted to just look at the Capital Investment Program Future Projects. And it looks like there's about $49 million in order to meet those already identified projects. But there's also a lot of blank spaces. So it's actually more than that. And so I just want to bring attention to that, that-
You mean these items that are to be determined?
Yes.
Yes.
So there's just a lot of needs out there. So how are we going to get there?
Eric, can you pass this out, please?
I had another quick question, more about cash flow. Can we have the FAQ talk about Morrisville Carpenter Road and reimbursement of those funds that we forwarded and whether or not that's any part of this process?
Morrisville Carpenter Road?
Yeah.
Just a status update of where we might be in cash flow?
Our cash out and when can we expect the cash back? Whether or not that's part of this or if that's a wash? Should we be worrying about that for timing?
Okay. I'll put that on the FAQ.
Appreciate it.
Other questions?
I have one if other people-
Yeah, I don't think anyone else has one, so we can do a second round.
I was curious about the $4 million that is in the Parkland Payment and Lou.
Right.
Why aren't we programming any of that for this coming year?
We are.
Are we?
So not this coming year, but we are proposing to leverage Parkland Payment and Lou through the CIP. So here's a source, a use of the Parkland Payment and Lou here. We do anticipate each year to collect some value. But again, we have been talking about it's becoming a potential diminishing source. So is it going to grow at the same rate that it has? That's something we have to keep an eye on. So in the funding plan, we do designate potential use of Parkland Payment and Lou. When we were talking about moving Crabtree Creek Nature Park up from 2026 to 2023, that is part of the financial advisor's strategy is as we measure and track how the model's improving year over year, we may need to leverage Parkland Payment and Lou specifically for that one to get it back up the chart. So that one's been targeted. And potentially, MCP could be also the other one that gets targeted.
Okay. So the plan is for fiscal year '22, we don't use any of it so that it's available in '23 to possibly bring the timing of Crabtree Creek up.
And if the model improves, that we're able to leverage the debt and still be able to project that capacity in the future for the other projects, then Parkland Payment and Lou is back on the table for other park projects. It could be leveraged for your land acquisition, would be a primary opportunity. So when we projected in 2023, I think it was $2.3 million in that year for potential bond debt capacity. You could put Parkland Payment and Lou with that and purchase additional property.
Okay.
Okay. So there's just, so I guess what I'm demonstrating here is there's a lot of strategies we can move around and align. We just need to know what is the will of council. And in order to get that information out of you is to take what we've already had conversations up in terms of building a bond referendum and a CIP and culminate it in a plan. And then tell us what we need to adjust and work with and where do you see the future in the next five years? Does that work? Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions on CIP?
So I want to just talk briefly about something else that was new that I failed to mention because I think I was trying to cut short my commentary. I passed out to you the report for your CIP exercise and prioritization. Now, as I told you before you took this exercise, this conversation was for the future items. It's going to be for another CIP conversation that we're going to have. So it's really going to be handled outside of this budget conversation because your bond referendum, conversations with our financial advisors, our previous CIP conversations have all contributed to building what you see in front of you now and what we know we have to work with. And what we want to stage and set up for is where do we need to go in the future and talk about? That's going to be another conversation to come shortly. So I passed this out to you and I have included it in the information here just so you know where some of these projects fell according to your prioritization. And you'll notice that staff, because we have other types of resources, potentially moved two of those projects forward based on your prioritization. Items one, two, and three are already a part of the equation of the active project. So as you look through it and you see what each other has said, why certain projects were important in certain categories, just keep that a part of a future conversation. Your CIP was crafted by previous conversations and previous work through developing and planning for primarily a bond referendum and what you know are committed installment financings for public works that you know is an important item coming forward. So your five-year CIP and active projects are basically laid out for you. And it's built on the premise of the model that you've seen before. So with that, just take that, look over it, and we will have another conversation outside of the budget. Questions, comments?
I filled this out so long ago, I don't remember what I put.
Well, there's lots for council to talk about. So you'll be really fascinated to pick up on your common threads. And then, more so the places where you're maybe not so close together. And those are things that you're going to have to talk through. That's why it's a future conversation that you'll need to have. There's some items that people want to remove and then there's other items that people don't want to remove. So I think you need to put those kinds of things on the table, and that needs to happen outside of this budget.
And this is where some other things will come in. Town Center needs to interplay into this. There are other sidewalk projects, intersection improvements, stormwater. All of those capital infrastructure things are coming that will layer into your CIP as well. Shiloh improvements that we're getting information for you to consider incorporating into a CIP.
And we look at this every year. So just be mindful of that. You know, you're not harming yourself by moving it off of the budget conversation because you already have something to work with and you know what your capacity was. It moves it to a conversation and allows you the time to work with it and focus on bigger, long-range protection. All right. If there are no other questions- If there are no other questions, I'm going to move us on because we are approaching 10.
So you're saying that these are all five years out and more?
Those are according to really this, your unfunded items, largely yes. There are a few of them based on your top priorities where staff tried to pull a few of those items in to your active projects because you rated them so high and you were very strongly committed as an entity on those. So we did try to work those in there. Your top one, two, and three are already a part of your bond and CIP active projects. I just listed it as active. I should have put the number there.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So then moving forward. American Rescue Act Plan. So really quickly, the Rescue Act Plan is a strategy to front-load the fact that we know this money's coming. Put some structure in place, reimburse us some revenue loss that we know we experienced. The budget outlines really that revenue loss for 2021. It allows you to take a portion of what you know is going to come in the first distribution and create that structure. And staff has, or Martha in this case, has been a part of those discussion groups to really sort of glean what we can do and where it's headed. More specific guidance is going to be released by the Treasury Department, and staff's going to make sure that we are lining up to that. But generally, what we know it works towards is revenue replacement that works for Morrisville, what we're taking advantage of right now. And then transformational programs and assistance projects. So putting a structure in place that allows us to take advantages of one-time, what we think winds up to that definition, current definition of transformational projects. That could be sustainability, that could be solar items, and smart city items, truly transformational-type programs or one-time initiatives. We've lined that, those types of costs up, and you can see that in the budget book, what those items are on page 39. It's a strategy to get in front of what we know is about to come, but staff will have to make sure that if you leave it in the budget, that we align to the reporting requirements and that we make sure the uses of it are in alignment with the Treasury. And, I mean, any day now, they keep talking about that guidance coming forward. And of course, there's other types of eligible uses that may or may not work for the town of Morrisville. Obviously, water and sewer investments. We do not have a water and sewer utility anymore. So with that, really, what does the allocation look like? Forty-nine percent of the $2 million, roughly $2 million, is for revenue replacement. That's a million. The remaining million goes towards those one-time initiatives, and then putting in place a workforce or resource person that helps manage and track this and get out into the community. Whatever programs we decide to align to this, what we plan for, this person would be the one that's making those things happen and making the connections and networking. And as you see, the transformational projects are listed here as well. So with that, I'm going to pause on ARPA. I'm going to see if Martha wants to weigh in on ARP specifically.
I will. So a regular part of my day now to try to keep up with this. There was guidance issued yesterday, 151 pages of it, mostly for metropolitan cities who will get direct allocations from the federal government. That is not us. We are considered a non-entitlement, as most are, and our funds will flow through the state. There is a timeframe established for all of those processes to happen, which actually sort of started today. But the state has some time to get their processes in order. So currently, we expect a first distribution, and I'll come to how much that is in a little bit, in the next 60 days. Today's seminar was all about getting the paperwork ready so that when the portal opens to apply for our money, we are ready to do that. And staff is already working on that today. But it's a bureaucratic process. Things will have to get approved, all of those types of things. The final numbers of how much we will receive are, also have not been issued. The estimates have stayed consistent. It's based on population for the most part. So the town of Morrisville is projected to get approximately $8.4 million. That will come to us in what, the two tranches. So the first half is that money that's expected in the next 60 days. As Jeanne mentioned, we have not programmed all of that, and I'll come back to why. And then the second part of our money would come one year after the first tranche. So that would be next fiscal year's budget. And all monies must be spent by December 31, 2024. So the guidance that they have been providing us consistently since the act was passed at the federal government was, don't rush to spend all this money. Do community assessments, plan, think about it. Again, transformational, there's from some very specific categories of spending that they are looking to recover from the pandemic. Some of them are not in our wheelhouse. We don't do water and sewer. We don't do broadband. So there's some of those, we don't provide public health services. So we are looking for those kinds of things that will help move our community forward. And that's an interpretation I am currently making based on some of the guidance that I've heard, but has not definitively been provided to us. So that's why we're being very cautious. We've programmed about half of this first money, but only about half of that in expenditures. What I am certain of is revenue replacement, and as you may remember from Jeanne's presentation last time, for us, that was about $2 million. So I'm cautious in that I think I've purposed the money right, but if the guidance would be a little bit different, it would be revenue replacement for us. But it also allows us the time to really explore the things that we want to provide for our community. The most significant place you see that in the budget is the proposed small business development. That is clearly a part of the guidance, so that's definitely called out. But that's the strategy for this year's budget and just the knowledge of, we have time to plan and prepare and find out what things are legitimate expenditures and what aren't. The fiscal recovery officer is, again, there is going to be lots of additional workload and paperwork. There's seeking grants. There are other parts of the act that may ultimately relate to us, infrastructure grants, other things like that that aren't part of this money I've just told you about. But we would need somebody to evaluate and then explore opportunities that we may have for some of those other monies, these separate sections of money. So it's going to be a significant workload, that position. Again, I'm providing you some additional information about that position. But the Small Business Development Program would need staff support for it, seeking out additional grants beyond what we're doing. That will be workload. We're already doing things in administration that we just don't have the capacity to do ongoing basis, so that I think that there is significant workload that can be met by that position, and I think it's a legitimate expense of these monies. I'm happy to answer any specific questions about ARPA that somebody wants to ask.
Councilmember Ralph, followed by Mayor Pretum Johnson, and then, or Vicki Scroggins-Johnson, then Mayor Pretum. Please.
Just something to think about, you know, when it says, so the small business recovery is looking at another $1,045,000 for one-time expenditures, including small business development. My concern is that it's going to, it's going to take a while to get that fiscal recovery officer in place, like Martha said, the staff time, the support. How could we leverage those dollars? And I forgot to mention in my comments today, but one program, what I'm hearing from small businesses right now is that there's a lot of changes that the president made to the, you know, different things like paycheck protection program for the kinds of loans that are being given. But the most important is the restaurant revitalization program, which is $38 billion. Any restaurant can get up to $10 million, and they're prioritizing women-owned businesses, veterans, and economically disadvantaged. So even if we could get some of those dollars allocated to get the message out to businesses, because that's what I'm hearing from businesses, there's so many webinars and resources and emails coming out that you can't even keep up with the changes to the program, right? And so maybe that's something that we can think about is, you know, if you want, you can go to, if you're listening and you're watching this online, you can go to restaurant.sba.gov. If you're a small business and you're listening, you can get all of the resources there, or just go to sba.gov, and it goes through all of the changes that were made a couple weeks ago, and there was a lot of changes. And so some of the businesses out there, you know, maybe we can work with the chamber. I'm just giving some ideas. But it's going to take a while, like Martha said, right, to get this person on board. There's only so much stuff our staff can do. Would it require perhaps creating, we're already talking about creating a position, but would that money go to create a separate position that you would delegate this stuff to, or would it be working with the chamber? You know, I don't know. I'm just thinking out of the box. I just want to make sure we're getting the, maybe it's, we go to the chamber and we just figure out how we get the message out to our businesses quicker by these resources. So, but a dollar's going to be used from it.
When we get information, we are sharing it through our social media channels to make people aware, as is the chamber. And that's, that's an example, I think, of, one, is aside from having money allocated to small business development, then there is going to be a process of what that means. Is it loans? Is it communication? Is it training? None of that has been done. So, and again, just a scattershot approach is not what you want to do with any of this money. We will have to plan and prepare. But it could also be helping businesses apply for those types of things. I don't know because we just don't have all the information available at our fingertips yet. We do have some things in the works, working with some interns this summer to sort of help us start getting prepared, at least, with databases of small businesses and tools that may be part of a program that we would develop. So we're not sitting and waiting on our hands. And you're correct, any position takes some time to put in place. We'll be ready to go once council would approve that position.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, followed by Mayor Pretum Johnson, please.
Thank you. I have a couple questions about this, the ARPA opportunity. It's described as a non-competitive, like, grant. Do we currently, in the town staff, have a grant specialist or someone that does grants part-time?
Yeah, if you remember, just a couple weeks ago, Dawn Rab presented an administrative report for how we're working to make sure we're keeping our eyes out for any grant opportunities. This one's at a different level, and this one would need some experience beyond, not faulting Dawn at all, but this one would be differently focused.
Right. I was actually not thinking, I was thinking we would build on that capability. I mean, this is a very specialized, you know, there could be Peer Rules and Apex and Cary and Wake County and, you know, just everybody, every municipality in Wake County is going to be struggling with meeting requirements, understanding how it fits into their municipality. It's a shared experience.
And if I, one of the things, and this actually was just something that both Brandon and I participated in yesterday morning, our relationship with Triangle J is where the managers are collaborating and sharing information. So we're not all starting from scratch. We'll be, we'll be sharing those opportunities. It's a regularly scheduled, that we'll be using and helping each other with this big thing.
Exactly. So what I was, you know, trying to come to grips with is how important this role is, how specialized it is. But I really think there's an opportunity to work with, you know, people like Dawn, who's working on grants that are not related to this, because there's a lot of complementary grants that we might be able to think about creatively and make this money even more because of the relationship that they would have with certain projects. We don't even know, I mean, I see your transformational initiatives. Those are really good initiatives, but we don't even know what that criteria is going to be. So some might not make the cut, and some might, and we might need grants from another source in order to meet some of those initiatives. So I see potential with this proposed rule as helping us through this very complex process, but I also want to see that we're, you know, working to get other grants as we see things kind of shifting.
And that's, you're 100% correct. That's actually one of the basic principles they've said, is use those other resources and grants and earmarks, et cetera, before you tap this money. And just another thing that I'll hopefully remind council of is working with Congresswoman Ross's office. We applied for, I'll call it earmark funds, in three areas. The one that has been put forward is our Small Business Development Program. If we were successful in that, we would not want to use the ARPA money. We don't know that we will be approved for that separately, but that would be an adjustment that could be made if we got resources from a different source.
Fantastic. So, I mean, you're saying exactly what I was thinking, but I just wanted to seize the opportunity. This is a really great situation for Morrisville, but I know we can do great things when we think creatively as well, so thank you.
Having something included as an expectation in your budget just allows you to move quicker. We can get to it faster, whereas maybe others might not be strategizing in that way.
Right, right. And one of the things, just me, really, as we listen and talk about the future needs of the town, and that's the, some of the critical words with moving us forward, is what we keep talking about, which is, which is land and capital projects. I just can't tell you I have any sense of whether these monies will be able to be used for that purpose. That's what I'm really waiting to find out. That would be a discussion changer for us. I just can't guide you on that just yet.
We don't have the information, but we will. Thank you.
Mayor Pretum Johnson?
So Martha, you may have all discussed this, and I missed it. So I, so we're estimated, and I get it. You've been very clear about that. We don't know whether this is really what we're going to get or not, but you estimate that it's going to be 8.4 million in two buckets. So the first bucket-
Half and half.
Right. So the first bucket, we think, is going to be 4.2 in the next couple of months. But this budget, you only, you only show 2 million. So what are you, what are you doing with the other 2 million?
We would have plenty of time to discuss and program that. It would come in and sit there.
Sit in reserves.
Okay.
It'll come in and sit here till we appropriate it. It'll come in and sit here till we appropriate it somehow.
Why aren't you even indicating that in the budget, then? That you anticipate an additional 2 million that'll just go into general funds?
I thought we did.
Well, I mean, we're saying approximately 4 million, we're appropriating 2 million, we're only utilizing half. The remain, and we're setting up a separate fund, so the remaining balance sits in that fund in reserves.
Okay. Is that spelled out here somewhere? Have I totally missed that?
I thought it-
And I'm looking at page, so you know, I'm looking at page 39, and that's, that is, that's not clear on page-
I would go to page 22 of the budget message. There's a lot more-
Yeah, I think it was all in the budget message.
It's a lot more explanation about the Americans Rescue Plan and Martha's budget message.
Okay, then I missed that. Would you say page 22?
Page 21, and then 22.
Oh, I even have, I even have that page earmarked.
I think you might find that information there.
Okay, okay. Okay, that, well, why, why don't you put it on page 39, too? I don't know why.
Well, we can, we can amend that and put that on page 39.
Maybe, it's just me. Don't do it for me. I, nobody else is concerned. But I, I was trying to figure out-
Remember, this is a working document, so we can certainly add the note.
Right. Well, because this, this page is the page that spells out-
What we're using, not what we're getting. But-
Yeah, okay, 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 thank you. All right, that helps me greatly, then. Okay. And, and you're right, until we know what the details are, this could be a game changer for us if we can use it in some very unique and special ways for the town of Morrisville. So that, I'm, I'm, as you are, deeply interested in seeing where that ends up. So, then the other-
But it also, I, I hope it illustrates why I didn't throw 4 million dollars of this money towards a balanced budget. That, I think, that's what I'm also trying to illustrate is, is preparing for the future is how that money will best serve our community. The projects that I've proposed, prepare us for the future.
Okay. Yep, I agree. And so then you probably, this is probably spelled out two, and I missed it, or haven't put two and two together. You said we've already spent 2 million dollars due to COVID. But, no, okay.
We are projected revenue losses in fiscal year '20 and '21 were about 2 million dollars.
Okay, and that is?
That is definitely one of the categories this money can be used for. So I'll, I'll say to replenish your fund balance.
So, but that, but the, again, on this page 39, the light item says general fund revenue replacement. You only put 1 million.
Because the other part that I'm programming is the expenditures.
Okay.
She could ask.
Okay, got it, got it. I'm, I'm sorry.
I got it, I got it. And so-
Okay, then that leads to my next question. Thank you, that helped me. And you, you've talked about how the fiscal recovery officer will come out of this pot of money. Did I, and I see that on the page here, but did I misunderstand? Did you, did you also say the small business development position and the smart city position could potentially come out of this money?
No. The small business development funds will need to be managed and administered by somebody. And that could be this fiscal recovery officer. The smart city initiatives are transformational for our community, not the program manager.
Okay, so you can't take the program manager out of these funds, even though, I, I get it, it's only for a, a year or two maybe max, and then, okay, all right. Well, maybe that's-
In general, in general, other than the fiscal recovery officer, none, none of the other proposed items are recurring expenditures out of the ARPA money.
Okay, got it, got it. Okay.
You want to treat it as a grants, capital, project type.
Because it will not be a recurring source.
No, I get that. You don't, and you can't, but, but, you know, we've, we've gotten grants before, even the police department. We've gotten grants, you know, where you, it's 100% one year, then it's 50%, and it slowly kind of ratcheted down. And, okay, I was just curious if that was somehow something we could leverage in all of this. But, okay, all right. Those are my only questions. Thank you.
Okay. So I'd, I'd follow up, and then we'll see if anyone else has a first round. For that other 2 million, I know we're not doing anything with it yet, but whatever we could do to not use up our general fund, our, our fund balance this year. So if we could maybe make, reducing that 2.5, even though it's just a placeholder, perhaps, if we're not gonna use it all, it'd be good to not have to cut into our savings. So I guess that's an FAQ. What could we do? How could we do this budget without using 2.5 of fund balance?
You would have to cut expenditures.
Really? That's the only lever we have?
That's what you would have to do.
Isn't there any way to gain revenue?
If, if council would choose to discuss that, yes. But as the budget is proposed, you would just have to reduce expenditures.
Okay, so it's one or the other.
Because your strategy-
Just want to make sure that's on the table.
Really incorporated some portion of your use of ARPA monies in lieu of pulling more from fund balance.
Right. Councilmember Fender or Garamella, do you want to weigh in before we do a second round? Okay. Councilmember Rau?
Yeah, so to follow up on what the mayor just asked, that's what I'm trying to get my arms around, is when we talk about revenue replacement, how stringent are they in, you know, like, in other words, if we were able to get the Small Business Recovery Program, or program through Congresswoman Ross's office, could we allocate that money to something else? Or the revenue replacement, how could those dollars be levered to build capacity, which we talked about? Or is it just ongoing operations of the town? Are they very strict with the categories? I can see the transformational initiatives. I'm just trying to better get an idea of revenue replacement, what it could and could not be used for. Is it just-
So revenue replacement really is going back into your fund balance, which is capacity.
Okay, so it's going back in the fund.
It's replacing capacity lost-
Okay.
From reduced revenues.
So it's not giving us any additional capacity. It's just going in to replace-
One-time source.
It's a one-time, so whatever we lost, it's going back in there to replenish that into our fund.
And yes, if, if we were awarded a separate federal earmark, then we would not need to use this ARPA money for, as appropriated, that it could be used for something else.
Yeah. So could we find another need that we have? Whether, I mean, could that money go into parks? Could it go into transportation, or is it-
Again, we don't know what we can use it for. Yeah. That's what we still don't know.
Okay. All right, that's what I was curious.
Yeah, the only guidance you basically have right now are these general statements. And, and Martha's participation in groups that have explained what these, these items mean in order for her to be able to put together a budget recommendation that includes that. Other questions?
Oh, this was helpful. This was very helpful.
All right. So we're gonna move us forward, mayor, to wrap us up. Okay. I thought you were raising your hand. So I just want to thank everybody for, for listening, asking your questions, and, and hope the overview does allow you to sort of focus in and prepare your direction. Remember, staff really encourage you, you at this point forward, to put your interests on the table for each other, so you can figure out where each other stands in this, this budget recommendation, what your interests are that's common, and then figure out where you are apart. And that's really gonna help you narrow down your conversation, what you need to focus on. That's going to help give us direction by May 20th, so that we can sort of get those, that information to you that you need. I'll also say at this point, make sure that you stay big picture. You know, you can become too prescriptive and scenario-specific, and sometimes it puts you in a spot, and there's no one right answer because the rules can change the next day. Be big picture. What are, what do you value? What do you interest? Do you think this budget aligns to that? And stay focused that you have strategic goals that are guiding this process here, and, and where are we misaligning with that, with this budget. I believe we try to lay it out where it is strongly aligning to those things. In order to help council, I would recommend, so this is about to be handed back over to you, so you can do your deliberation. Staff has done their dance and provided you with information. It will be bringing more information back to you. But at this time, I think it's really important, whether it's tonight or whether you carry this conversation forward, is making sure you spend some time talking about how you're gonna talk about the process, how, what process you're gonna use to talk with yourselves about moving forward with this. I might suggest that you might each identify really what in the budget aligns well to your interest as individuals, and then sharing with each other maybe what you need more information on and why, that it's important. Sort of helps, certainly helps staff know where you're standing. That's gonna be important to us to understand, to be able to glean really what we hear from seven individuals, to synthesize what might have to shift or change. Or is the budget, does the budget as a recommended item work for you as a whole? Counsel may also want to then just make sure that you have an understanding of those common threads, and then make sure that you consider what's missing as individuals, and why is it important that it be included now versus later. And make sure that you're sharing that kind of information with each other. So that's what I would propose as a recommendation from staff to council, as I pass this football back over to you, mayor.
Okay. So if everyone wants to just sort of share a little bit, I mean, the first thing I think about is how this budget, I think, really meets the needs for this year and gets us started towards a good place. And I think the staffing recommendations are important, especially because we postponed from, some from last year. So I support all of those. I support this budget completely, and I just would like to know if my fellow council members see any way that we can enhance it, make it better, so it looks more into the future and builds more capacity for us going forward, and perhaps doesn't use up so much of our fund balance, which took a while to build. And if we use it up, it's not gonna be there anymore.
Well, so let me ask you that. What, what are you suggesting, then? This is twice now you've brought that up. So what are you suggesting?
I know, next year, the plan is to raise our property tax by 3 cents. I believe that if we were to do a small incremental change this year of 1 cent or 2 cent, we could flatten our needs and start building capacity into the future. This year, Wake County commissioners are not planning to do a property tax increase. So many years, councils point to Wake County and say, oh, they're raising it by 2 cents. We can't do anything, because that would be too much on our residents. The fact that they're not doing anything this year makes it a little bit more palatable to our residents to, if we can tell them what they're getting in the future, if we can move some of these projects of those 49 million, that's five years out, a little bit closer. If we can do a little bit more land acquisition and preserve the trees, I think of it as a stock buyback for the town. We can enhance our quality of life by preventing use of our land that they're not looking for. They're not looking for clearcutting. They're not looking for more apartments on every corner. They're looking for us to preserve why they came here. The only way that we can do that is by buying the land and providing the programs that they're asking for, including a community center in our town center sometime down the road. I don't see how we get there if we keep on running at the current property tax rate. So I'm just putting it out there. If some, if the council four years ago had raised the property tax rate by a cent or two back then, we would be benefiting from that now. We would have more capacity. We could accelerate projects. We could have a better quality of life. And some people would have been unhappy to be paying a little bit more, but that's what government does. It brings together resources that can't be done by the private sector or by people alone. So we can make all our neighborhoods, our entire town, better if we make it easier on future councils. So that's just, I'm putting that out there. If this council wants to do that, I think future councils will thank us. If we don't choose to do it, we'll keep on coming up to opportunities that we may or may not be able to execute. It might be this or that, rather than this and that. So that's about as clear as I can make it, Mayor Pretem Johnson.
So I will tell you, I, I think you put, if you are going, first of all, ever, all those items you just talked about, you could not fund with a 2-cent tax increase alone. So that's number one. Number two, we are out there right now asking the public to weigh in on a bond referendum that will cause a 3-cent tax increase. And I think at our May 20th meeting, we're gonna get some feedback, or get some input on that feedback. And that, I think, is gonna be critically important for us to see that information. I am deeply concerned about putting our bonds in jeopardy this November.
Would love to hear from more council members, so I don't respond directly.
I can understand both of your points. I do think we need to start building capacity sooner rather than later. However, I share the same concern as Liz, that we're gonna be putting on the ballot in November, asking the residents, do you want your property taxes to increase by 3 cents? I just think it'd be really hard to sell to our residents a property tax increase now, and then ask them to vote for 3 cents a few months from now.
Yeah. I, I, I agree with the, this idea of creating more capacity so we can do more things. My only concern is doing the, you know, I need to think about it more and talk to other council members about what they think. I mean, is there a way of building some extra capacity by, you know, with some of this ARP funding and things like that? You know, I mean, I'm gonna think it through. You know, I mean, I, I think that that's, you know, I just want to make sure that we all can get behind a budget and a bond that we know can pass. But at the same time, I think we're at a point where we have to look at, we're not gonna do some of the things we want if we don't have the revenue. That's basically what you're saying. So, I mean, so anyway, well, well, point well taken.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Thank you, TJ. I cannot think of a better way to get input from our public than to put a bond on the ballot. I, I'm actually very excited that we are sharing the vision with our community and describing to them the opportunities for our public safety, our parks, and our roads. And we will get feedback through the ballot directly. I, I just, I, I'm so excited about that opportunity. When we talk about the budget and the different decisions that we have to make, the proposed budget has a solid basis and solid, you know, thinking behind it, but we always have more aspirations than we have money for. I am very concerned that we would put the bond in jeopardy. I know that we're just in the middle of our budget review with our team. So I'm looking for opportunities to maybe see if we can find more capacity for reserves. Could we, is there anything in there that we want to reduce priority and then put into the reserve? I mean, there's just things that we have to think about to build the capacity with the current budget. And if that isn't enough, then, then that's another conversation. But right now, I'm very supportive of the bond. I really want that to succeed, because it's cheaper money to borrow than it would be to internally finance. So I want to give us the best opportunity for success. We're gonna continue this conversation. This is just, you know, early May, but that's where I am today.
Councilmember Garamella, did you want to share any thoughts?
I think Martha put it straight, right? We have to cut our expenses if we have to increase our debt. I mean, it's the capacity. So, you know, we can't be doing both, because our revenues are limited the way we are doing. We are trying to match the top quality at the same time- We are trying to match the top quality at the same time trying to catch up with our lagging infrastructure. So both are important, but, you know, we've got to give a priority, which one to give it more, right? So it's a balancing act. That's what we are here. And Martha gave the budget, and if we think some of the things are not a priority, then as a council, let's tell that, you know, saying this is our priority that we want to go. How do we, you know, make adjustments to it? So that's what I would start with, even before trying, like, let's get more, you know, like increase taxes or anything. That's the last of the things. We have too many tools that we can use right now to work it through what our priorities are.
Okay. So everyone's had a chance. I see Mayor Potem would like to speak again.
Yeah, I do need to say something else because this is really important to me. This bond is important to me, too. And I know you don't mean this, TJ, but when you say things like you just did, you marginalize and diminish the value in this bond that we're going to ask the public to support. This bond is $37 million worth of projects that our citizens want and need. And by acting like that's not, and I know you don't mean to do it, I'm telling you what is perceived. By acting like that's not valuable and important to our citizens is very concerning to me because I want the citizens to understand how valuable and what an investment these 2021 bonds are to this community. So that's number one. And number two, our citizens do not have a bottomless pit of money. They do not go out and spend money on everything they need or want every year. They prioritize and they are very thoughtful about what they are spending and how they are spending it, and they expect the same from us. And that matters to me, and I think it does to most of us on this council, that we're very good stewards of the taxpayers' money. And I want our citizens to know that's important to me and I know to many of us here, and that we will continue to do the very best we can. We will continue to work on ways to bring in more revenue or to adjust our plans and priorities to give them what they need, want, and deserve, quite frankly.
I agree. Their emerging interests are really good, and we appreciate them. And I feel so strongly about this bond that I tried to have us do it two years ago and last year. This bond is one of the most important things that will bring our town forward. I support it fully and totally, and I don't want to diminish anyone's thoughts about it, but it doesn't do everything, obviously. People have said before, you can't do everything. We don't have the money to do everything. I agree. Do we, as a council, feel like we can do more? Is there an opportunity? I believe that our staff, over the years, has done a really great job becoming more effective and more efficient with the resources we give them. I think we'll see that they are one of the leanest staffs per capita in Wake County. They're doing an excellent job. I think we can't get any more blood from that stone. I think if we're going to do more things, we need more bodies. And for that, I'm glad that staff is making that request. In Good, Great &amp; Other Books, they say you can't grow any faster than your good people. So we have great people, and we're adding more, so we're going to have the staff capacity, but we need the financial capacity to actually make the most of our potential as a town. So the other thing you were saying early, I think that was mostly the bond, and I do support the bond. And I understand that our residents are very conscious of spending their money, as are we, and we have been. So if we're very upfront and thoughtful and transparent about what we can give them for any kind of tax increments, like we are doing with the bond, then I think that they would support it. We hear throughout the year that they want us to do more. And then we have this month where we're trying to keep the property tax the same, which is fine, but for the other 11 months, we're hearing from the residents that they want us to do more. So this is the only time of year that we can actually do something so that we can provide more to them during the year. There's lowering expenses, raising revenue. Lowering expenses, I think we've done it to the point that we can. If we want to have more potential in our town, the other option is a property tax adjustment, and we haven't done it very much. Last year was an extraordinary year in that we went up three cents from revenue neutral. That might be unprecedented. We're better off this year because of that. If we had run at 33 cents last year, I don't know where we'd be. We'd be struggling. If we were at 39 cents last year, we'd be in better shape right now, and I don't think anyone would have left town. So look ahead. If we raised it one or two cents this year, are people going to leave town? Are they going to vote us out of office? They might, but the future councils would benefit from having the capacity. So if the residents want us to meet our potential, I would hope that they would speak up and support the items that they ask for all the rest of the year by sending us an email or entering the budget portal. If they do, we have an answer. If they don't, we have kind of an answer. But that's, I'm just putting it out there. If we wanted to do more, it's totally up to us. They elected us to do more, and I think that we're going to do these programs in the bond. Whether or not the bond passes, these are important projects. The bond, as has been said, is a financial instrument. GO bonds are a little bit less expensive than installment financing. The cheapest money is property tax rate because we don't have any pass-through, we don't pay any interest on it. So when you save up for college, you put it in a bank and you're gaining interest. When you wait till the last second, you're paying interest. So right now, it seems like to do these big projects, we're waiting, waiting, and we're paying interest. It's like going to, saving up for college August before your child goes to college. You should be saving up 10 years in advance, like we're doing for the roadways. So if we dedicate some money for the items that we think are important into the future, if we have a town center capital fund, we can put money aside, but it sits idle. So that's not great if we're using up our capacity to do that. If it's new, dedicated funding, like a penny for parks, if we add a penny and we dedicate it to parks, people understand that, and that's kind of what we're doing with our bond because 17 millions is going for, of the 37. So that's like a penny and a quarter is for parks. So if we dedicate one this year, that's two and a half cents for parks. That gives us closer to parks. So now I'm done with my talk. Councilmember Fender.
Yeah, I want to go home, but I think it's important that I do say this. I do think it's a hard sell to increase the tax rate by whatever when we are going to turn around and do a bond in November and ask residents for that, you know.
Three cents the next year.
Yeah, three cents, but that approval of increasing their tax rate. However, I do think it is unfair to assert that Mayor Colley is minimizing or diminishing the importance of the bond by simply saying that he wants to do more, and we do need to build capacity. I didn't perceive that in any way, shape, or form, that just because the mayor wants to, is floating the idea of, do we increase the tax rate by a little bit this year? He's not implying that, or diminishing the importance of the bond, and I think that's unfair to portray him doing that. You know, he is passionate about this town and passionate about improving the quality of life in this town for the residents. As our residents have been screaming at us to do, they want a dog park, they want more parks, less apartments, and we are not doing as much as, you know, we would like to, simply because we have run so lean for so many years. You know, I liked TJ's idea of like, you know, doing a tax of one cent just for parks, put it in a fund similar to the roads. If I could be, if someone could convince me that if we did that one cent dedicated for parks in our budget this year would not put our bond in detriment, I would be all for that. I don't know if that evidence is out there or if it could be, you know, determined one way or another. However, we, one way or another, we need this bond to pass in November, and we do need those funds to invest in our town, and I do think that is the priority right now.
Councilmember Ralph.
Well, I think the good news is that we have had success in the past when we have dedicated a portion of the tax rate, for example, to transportation. So when you look, we did that, that built up over time. So I think the question is, when, you know, the question is, when do we do that? Do we do it now, or do we wait, get behind the bond, three cent, you know, come back, you know, next year and look at that? I think if we did increase taxes, I think it's good to look at it as where those investments are going. Is it going into parks? Is it going into transportation? Because then there's tangible benefits the residents can see, right? So I think the good news is the problem we all have is we can do more, and then the question becomes, how, right? How do we do that? It'd be nice to do everything we can. So, I mean, I think this has been a good discussion to, the way it's been laid out for us to think about, you know, policy and where some of these ARP, you know, funds perhaps could be used if, you know, for example, we got the small business recovery from Congressman Ross's office. Where could those monies be deployed if we weren't going to have to use it for the small business program to address what some of the stuff the mayor's bringing up? Could we take, you know, a half a million or a million and put it into parks? Could we put it into sidewalks and roads? Could we put it into some of these things the citizens are asking for, you know, which would be, you know, equivalent if it was $600,000 or $800,000? That could be the equivalent of one cent of the tax rate, right? So, or two cents of the tax rate. So I think it's given us some good policy things to consider as we look at this budget and future budgets. Thank you for sharing.
This has been a really good discussion. Any other thoughts before we wrap? Excellent. Thank you all. Staff's bringing forth really important information. We're looking forward to the FAQ on the 20th, or as early as we can before that so that we can digest it. And then on the 20th, we're going to have more of this type of discussion, I believe, for the citizens to react to. Does staff have anything else for the good of the order? Do you want to mention how our surveys, maybe the bond surveys, ending on the 14th, on Friday? Is that right?
I can't hear what he's saying.
I'm sorry.
Bond survey ends on Friday.
Yes, bond survey ends on the 14th.
Okay, so that's townofmorrisfield.org, MSV Bond 2021. We're looking for as much input as we can on that. The bond portal is currently open to talk about the budget. We're looking for input on that, obviously. If you're watching this meeting now, hopefully you've already submitted. Feel free to submit more bond information. When will we start receiving any bond input through the portal? Has anything come in yet?
So we've already received some input through the portal, and we're starting to receive a few through the budget portal, specifically about the budget. I think more folks are focused on the bond. We've done a lot of marketing around that one, so we're just now rolling out the budget portal as well.
Your May 20th work session is related to budget workshop and an hour or so to go over the bond information that we've received and sort of finalize lock-in.
So it'll be a part of that packet.
Okay, so we won't see those budget and bond inputs till then?
You won't see the bond input until then. The budget portal stays open until the 25th, and I'll try to get that one turned around really quickly that same day because I have it closing at noon so that I can bring it to you that evening.
Is it possible you can give us the budget portal input as they come in?
The budget portal input as they come in? Sure, I could do that. There's just a few at a time. Typical for a budget where there's no tax rate increase.
They can help inform our decisions as we go. Okay, so staff doesn't have anything else good for the order? Any council members, final comments? Okay, seeing none. Thank you for watching this meeting of the Morrisville Town Council. We hope you plan to join us again. Please feel free to email your town council members at towncouncil@townofmorrisfield.org or visit www.townofmorrisfield.org/council for additional contact information. Is there a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Fender, a second from Councilmember Garamella. All in favor of adjourning the meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously, 6-0. The time is 10:49. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Mayor, I'd like to move us into closed session. Just joking.